Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
Welcome to the Rockingham Select Board Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. Now 6:00 PM. Our meeting in the Lower Town Hall Theater this evening and available on Zoom for those who are in attendance here. First, we need to call the order of meeting of the Rockingham Board of Liquor Commissioners. So at this, on this agenda, we have two applications here tonight. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Stanchus Place LLC second-class liquor license. Has to sign for with the town clerk. She'll sign that after we approve it or the action is taken. We have a second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Stanchus Place LLC second-class liquor license. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any discussion?
Aye.
Ben?
Did the other issue get resolved with this?
Yeah, it did too.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. Sorry, I got on a little bit late. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Lucky you got power.
Ben?
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have Wonderbar LLC first class. It says first. First class. First class. She knows.
Sorry, I got knocked off for a second.
First class, third class. Any questions?
Chairman, you don't have a motion on the board, but I'll make one. I move that we approve the license first class. Did you say the third class?
Yes, sir.
Hold on here. Third-class license for Wonderbar LLC. Second.
You have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded for Wonderbar LLC first and third-class liquor license. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes. We need to sign that one as well right here. That's the first one. Okay, now I'd like to call a meeting to order, Select Board Regular Meeting. So are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that shall require ratification at a future meeting?
Chairman, we have a few tonight. I'd like to add number 10, manager spending freeze. Under executive session, we'll have one. And personnel is not listed on this contract and legal. I don't know what the legal contracts are.
What is number 10, a discussion?
Yep.
And then I have one. We have item, item number eight. Currently, we have someone on Zoom that has a meeting that will be very close for them to get to that meeting. I would like to move that up if we could. I don't know where to put it. We could. I'm not sure what's happening with number one. Do you know?
That's the agency of transportation.
Right. Okay, great. So there's time, time conflict with number eight getting done in time before the person has to attend the next Zoom meeting. I'm wondering if we could move it up. We could put it after three. We could put it before three. Is that okay? We can put it, we'll put it right after number one. So it will be the new number two. We'll slide everything else down, okay? Great. I got a thumbs up over there. Really hard to see anything. Copy that, everyone? Susan, Ben? Okay. Need to approve the minutes? Or any other additions, adjustments? Okay, great. Moving right along. Need to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 7th, 2020, and from the special meeting of July 10th, 2020.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of July 7th and the special meeting in July 10th.
Second.
Sorry. It's had another call for tree on wires. Motion's been made and seconded to approve both of them. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Looks like Susan might be frozen. Ben? Ben still there? Okay, Susan's gone.
Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm having internet issues. I'm trying to get a better connection.
I believe it. It's okay. Guys, approve the minutes. Motion was made and seconded. You got three ayes here.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes. Motion passes. Approve the minutes. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes per person. Yes.
I'm Pat Fowler from Village Square Booksellers and a member of the Board of the Bellas Falls Downtown Development Alliance. And I'm happy to announce that we've hired a new executive director. It's Betsy Thurston. Some of you might know her because she works on the shopper paper and does some reporting on local, local community events. And we started doing the training today and she's going to be working for us 15 hours a week. And Mary Helen retired, as we found out at the joint board meeting at the end of June, and we're happy to have a replacement.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you to the town and village for supporting us so that we can have a director.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have no idea. Usually Shannon runs Zoom. It looks like Chuck might be running. Any hands up or comments? Anyone out there need to speak on public comments? Chuck? Okay. Last call, public comments.
Gaetano?
Yes.
Deb, right. Hi. I only want, I only want to say that please speak into your microphones. That includes everyone, including Chuck, who's over there. Because I can barely hear you. I know you have to have the masks on, but your heart, it's very inaudible. So please speak into the microphones. Thank you.
Thank you.
You could barely hear me, Deb, or, or Pat, or everyone.
No, Peter and Chuck. I couldn't hear. If you don't have the microphone in front of your face, it doesn't work.
Okay, thank you. One more thing. You got 42 seconds left.
This is Pat again. I just wanted to mention Board of Civil Authority. We have a primary coming up election next Tuesday, and it is at the fire station again. And there's opportunity for drive-in voting, and if people need some help getting there, contact the town clerk's office and we'll get you some help. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, item number one. V-Trans Bridge Replacement Project informational meeting, US Route 5, Bridge 38 over the Green Mountain Railroad, Rockingham BF 0113 in parentheses, 83. I believe we have some folks.
Thank you, Gaetano. I'm going to recognize Laura Stone from the Agency of Transportation. She is, I'm going to unmute her. Laura, can you hear us right now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so you have host power, so you can take over?
Okay, great. Oh, you might have to designate me as a host again. My internet kicked me out for a minute, and it looks like I can't share again.
Okay, as a general comment, everybody, we have folks on and off, on and off. It's, it seems to be a little bit more chaotic than normal, which I guess is part of the issue of the storm. So I'm going to more make host.
Yep, and if I, if you can't hear me for whatever reason, or if I'm choppy, just let me know. I, we also have Rob Young on the line, and he can try taking over and see if it's better. But right now, it seems.
You're coming in crystal clear.
Perfect.
Let's roll with it.
Okay, so it looks like I can share now.
Thank you.
Here we go. So this is the regional concerns meeting, as you said, for Bridge 38 over the Green Mountain Railroad on US Route 5. Rob Young is also here with us tonight. He's the V-Trans Consultant Project Manager, and I'm the scoping engineer. So the purpose of the meeting, we want to provide an understanding of our approach to the project, provide an overview of project constraints, the environmental constraints, the site constraints, discuss our selected alternative, including traffic control, and provide an opportunity to ask questions and voice concerns. We do like this to kind of be a back and forth. So if you have a question that pops up in the middle of the presentation, I'm fine taking it at the time. You can just interrupt me. Oh, here's a location map. You can see Bridge 38 right over here, over the Green Mountain Rail. And there's an aerial view. So here's the railroad coming up this way. Hopefully you can see my mouse. And there are a couple houses in close proximity to the bridge. So first off, I'm going to talk briefly about our project development process, just to give you an idea of where the project's at right now. Go over the project overview, so the existing conditions, talk about the alternatives that we considered briefly, and then we really want to focus on our selected alternative. And we'll talk about maintenance of traffic, the schedule, so when you can expect to see this in construction. Summary, and again, questions are at the bottom, but I'm happy taking questions anytime. So here's our project development process. This is really just to show you that we're at a really early stage in project development. The project's been funded. This is project definition. We identify resources and constraints. So we identify the right-of-way, the environmental resources, cultural resources, that sort of thing. We evaluate all the various alternatives, rehabilitation versus, versus replacement. Then we have this public participation piece. And really, we want to build consensus towards our project. So after, after this project, after this public, my lights are flickering, sorry. After the public participation piece, we're at project defined. That's when the project is going to go into design. We're going to quantify areas of impact. That's when we would start the right-of-way process, the environmental permitting, develop plans, estimates, then we'll award a contract, and it will go into construction. So before I go into the existing conditions, these are just some of the descriptions of the terms that we use. The bridge deck is the part that you ride on. That's the surface that you ride on. The beams, also we refer to as the superstructure. Sometimes we refer to the beams and the deck together as the superstructure. And then we have the substructure, which is the foundations at either end of the bridge. We also refer to them as substructures, foundations, abutments. And the bridge seat is the part that the beams sit on. So here's a picture looking north over Bridge 38. The roadway is classified as a major collector. It's a 59-foot-long, single-span riveted two-garter bridge. This is a non-redundant system. There's only two girders. It's owned by the state of Vermont, so there's going to be no local funds for this project. It's 100% state and federally funded. And it was constructed in 1929. Here's a picture looking south over the bridge. I'll just point out aerial utilities are located along, along this, the side of US Route 5. There'll likely be a minimal utility relocation needed here. So Bridge 38 is considered, considered structurally deficient due to the condition of the superstructure. Many of the floor beam ends have holes in the web, so there's actually holes in those steel beams. Section loss, so the steel beams are thinning. The floor beams over the abutments have long-slotted holes in the webs, varying between two feet and five feet in length. Additionally, the shoulders on US Route 5 are substandard through the project area. So here is the ratings of the bridge. The deck is rated a five. The superstructure is rated a four, which is poor, and the substructure is rated a six or satisfactory. Here's a picture of the superstructure. The eastern abutment. Somebody likes eggs. And the western abutment. As you notice, the abutments are founded on bedrock. So likely, any new structure would also be founded on that really, that strong bedrock. So resources. Here's a picture looking west from Bridge 38. It is located over a railroad. There's two wetland areas fairly far away from the bridge, so we don't anticipate any impacts to the wetland areas. All quadrants are considered pre-contact, archaeologically sensitive, and they're statewide significant agricultural soils. So here's the existing conditions layout. So this is like a bird's eye view of the bridge. There's the railroad going from top to bottom of the page. The bridge is shown in gray. The archaeological sensitive areas, as you can see, are in all four quadrants with this line that says A-R-C-H. These red lines here, that's the existing right-of-way. So the railroad right-of-way, the bridge is actually entirely within the railroad right-of-way. And then a state-owned right-of-way along US Route 5. So average daily traffic, there's about 2,000 vehicles per day that ride over the bridge. Design hourly volume, so that's your peak hour volume, that's your rush hour. Rush hour traffic is 230 vehicles per hour and percent trapped of 4.5. So the alternatives that we considered, we looked at no action, but the beams are in poor condition. Obviously, something has to happen within the next 10 years, so we ruled that out immediately. Next, we looked at a deck replacement. This would just be replacement of the floor beams. So those two main girders would stay, and we would replace the intermediate floor beams. It is a non-redundant structure. We like to get those off of our system. Additionally, a deck replacement would keep a nine, a 10-foot, one-foot typical, which is two 10-foot travel lanes with one-foot shoulders on either side. As I stated before, that's, that's substandard in width. Deck replacement, we'd expect about a 30-year design life. Next, we look at a superstructure replacement. So that's a replacement of both the deck and the beams. We would put in a new conventional superstructure, so we'd, we'd have multiple, more than two beams. We could widen it to a 10-3 typical, and we'd expect about a 40-year design life. Next, we looked at a full bridge replacement, both which would have an 80-year design life. We'd widen to the minimum standard, which is 11-foot to 11-foot travel lanes with three-foot shoulders. We looked at both a bridge option and a buried structure option. Ultimately, we selected a full bridge replacement here. We'd like to widen to the minimum standard of 11-foot, three-foot. We understand there's heavy bicycle traffic here. We really wanted to make sure that, that we accommodated, we accommodated share use. We would expect an 80-year design life out of the bridge. A minimal amount of right-of-way is going to be needed, and again, an aerial utility relocation. So here are the proposed typical sections, so showing those 11-foot travel lanes with the three-foot shoulders that goes to the face of rail. And the proposed layout. You can actually see that over the bridge, it's going to be wider than along the roadway. But we felt because this is an 80-year structure, in case a project comes through in the future, we want to make sure that it's constructed to the minimum standard. We might have some right-of-way, some right-of-way takes for the guardrail terminations. But otherwise, in terms of the actual structure itself, it's going to be similar in span to the existing, and we expect the actual structure to stay inside that railroad, that railroad like right-of-way. Here's the proposed profile. There is quite a grade on the bridge, about an 8% grade. The proposed grade is going to match the existing grade. We're not going to be raising the road or lowering or anything like that. So maintenance of traffic options considered. And this is where it gets interesting. So we looked at an off-site detour with accelerated bridge construction techniques or a temporary bridge. Sometimes we look at phased construction for structures. That's when it's built one half at a time while one lane is maintained on the structure. The existing structure is too narrow for phased construction, so we ruled that out. So ultimately, we selected here to go with a, a road closure. So the detour would be chosen and signed by the state. The available detour routes don't add distance to travel. We'd expect about a six-week closure. And I know in future projects, we've been able to reduce that somewhat, but working over the railroad presents its own challenges. Sure.
Just for a second?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So working over the railroad poses its own challenges. There's two trains that come through and every single, come through daily. And every time a train comes through, construction has to stop. I think it's half an hour ahead of time. So there's a lot of stopping and going with the construction, and it does draw out the construction schedule quite a bit. So we're proposing a six-week closure. The detour route has a 14.4 miles end-to-end with no additional mileage for through traffic. So the regional detour here will be Interstate 91. Again, there's an end-to-end distance of 14.4. So that distance is if you start at one side of the bridge and go all the way around the detour to the, to the other side of the bridge. And there's a through distance of 7.4 miles, no added distance for the through route. Because of the high bicycle traffic and I-91 obviously can't support bicycles, there is this local bypass route, which we, we would like to sign as a, as the bicycle detour. It's US Route 5 to Vermont 103, to Parker Hill Road, O'Brien Road, and Alden Road, back to US Route 5. And this has an end-to-end distance of approximately eight miles or an added distance of 1.9.
Uphill both ways.
So currently, we, this is slated in the budget for construction in 2023 with a total cost estimate of about $1.9 million. So for the project summary, we've chose a full bridge replacement with traffic maintained on an off-site detour. There will be a six-week bridge closure. The timing of the closure, we, we'd like to have some more input from the town. Is it better, you know, in June? Is it better in July, August? What time of year? Maybe outside of the school schedule. So the town will have some input on that closure, on that closure timing. We will be widening the bridge to an 11-foot, three-foot standard typical section. We expect an 80-year design life. Right-of-way, minimal amount of right-of-way will be needed, and an aerial utility relocation. I guess this is a good time to point out, we're also going to try some, some innovation for this bridge. So we thought this was a great candidate to use UHPC, which is Ultra High Performance Concrete. So we're going to be looking at pre-cast UHPC next beams or PBUs with, with UHPC closure pores and an overlay. So that will be some innovation that we'll be trying out on this bridge. So there's a link at the top of this presentation. This presentation tonight will be located at that link. All future plan sets will be posted to that link, so the public can go and see where, see, see what's going on with the, with the project throughout the process. So I guess I'll open it up to questions and comments at this time.
Well, I got, you want to go through the board first? We have, I, I think, so there's a member of the public in attendance tonight, and probably, I believe, quite a few more on Zoom who I'm going to let them go first with their questions, and I think it's going to be around the same category of the concerns and questions here. So if you come up and just push the button, make sure the button is green. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hey, I'm Doug Thurber. I own the marina just, just north of that bridge. And looking at the project that you're going to do, it's going to put a lot of people that visit my place in a, and it looks like it's going to be further than 14-point mile, 14.4 miles, what you suggested on there. That's going to put a lot of strain on anybody that wants to use the Heron's Cove. I mean, you're going to put traffic everywhere else around, and who knows if they're even going to come to my place if it's, you know, 15, 16 miles out of their way.
Yep, so that's, that's totally understandable, and we have, a lot of times with closures, businesses have this concern that we don't have traffic going past your business. So there is the local bypass, which only adds 1.9 miles. So in terms of distance, it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of distance. We have in the past put up signs.
That doesn't add up, that 1.9. There'd be no way to get to his business in under 14 miles.
You're talking about, you're talking about a boat business that people hauling trailers. So now you're putting all these trailers on those back roads that nobody's going to want to see.
Well, that's.
Certainly, we'd expect them to take I-91.
That's more than 14.4 miles back to my place. You're, you're putting a burden on the public to drive north to come south, then got to go back north. It's more than, by the time somebody does a reroute to go to Bellas Falls, it's a lot more than 14.4 miles.
So it's seven miles between, between the interstate exits here. So, so say you're coming from the south. You would take, you would go north on the interstate, seven miles, and then come down. And that's, I mean, it's 14 miles.
Yeah, then you got to go back. Then that same person has to go back seven miles, back another seven miles. So you're adding 28 miles to somebody that might be, you know. on time restraint or they have limited amount of fuel. I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's going to, it's going to knock a lot of people out from coming my way.
I have another question. So just across the river, I don't know how many were paying attention, but because of a bridge closure with a detour, a local store went out of business and store had been there a really, really long time. In addition to that, a lot of folks use that route. So my first question will be, is there or what happened to the temporary bridge plan? Is that possible to keep this open? Because I'll list all the reasons why many folks in attendance tonight, emergency services, folks who take that route to get to work in Charlestown, putting extra traffic on Route 12, which may or may not be done by 2023. There's a lot of reasons that I think folks would like to see this somehow stay open for at least one lane of traffic, especially a member on our select board lives just over that bridge and is a firefighter here in the village. And for him, and a 14 mile detour isn't going to cut it. And then, so if there's an option for a temporary bridge, what happened to that option? Is it not an option? And I just go from there with, with the further questions.
Yeah. So we, we looked at a temporary bridge. We discounted it because constructing the temporary bridge above the railroad is pretty tricky. There's a lot of overhead restrictions. And we felt with the detour distance, the amount of traffic, I mean, 2,000 vehicles per day. It's, I mean, it's not terribly high traffic. And we felt that a detour here was, was acceptable. Now, in terms of businesses, I think that they can definitely weigh in what's their busy months, their slow months. And we can take that into account for the closure timing.
He's a marina. It's probably the same time as construction season.
Yeah, I'm busy from April 1st to December 1st. So, I mean, you guys don't like to be building bridges in the winter.
No, but you know, a lot of times, so our construction schedule is, you know, May to, May to October. But that's a lot of times because of in-stream restrictions. So here, because this is a dry crossing, it's possible that we can push the limits. You know, if an April closure would work better, that's something that we can, we could definitely look into.
So is the answer, it's impossible or it wasn't cost effective for a temporary bridge?
It was not cost effective. It is possible. There's a lot of permitting that's involved. The archaeological sensitive areas are pre-contact. And so it would involve quite a bit of permitting. And again, working over the railroad is not ideal for a temporary bridge.
So if, if for some reason my business takes a major hit because of this bridge closing, is the state of Vermont going to help me out with that?
Nope. Rob, are you still on the line?
You. Yep, I'm here.
There you go. Because I know you dealt with this.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that a lot. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, a lot of concerns with businesses and we can definitely, you know, a big part of that is, you know, public outreach with folks to, you know, to reach out, to get the word out about, you know, when exactly the bridge closure is happening. Communicating with businesses to try to find that time of year, like you mentioned, I think is key. Because it's accelerated, you know, the length of that time, that's also something we can look at, look into if there's a, you know, the, I don't know, there's a variety, lots of tools in our toolbox with the details of the bridge to have input on that and effect of the duration of the closure. And so if there's, you know, a lot of concerns with businesses, you know, then we can look at, you know, reducing that schedule. And like you say, if, you know, we look, I think we started out with six weeks, so maybe we look into, you know, something shorter and doing it in, in the April and May timeframe.
In addition to businesses, sir, what's your typical response to putting a 14 minute detour for emergency responders? Someone in the trailer park had a cardiac incident. And it's now going to take, take the ambulance 28 minutes extra to get there.
Right.
So a lot of, a pretty good population right down there and that road is used often for ambulance, fire.
Yep. So there's a couple of options that have been done successfully in other towns. You, you have mutual aid with other towns, so maybe you would, you know, change the routes and services.
They'd be coming the same way. It's a, it's a 12 minute additional response time.
Okay. And then there's parking. I know moving a facility on the opposite side or wherever you think there's need. You could place a vehicle that would, you know, be better able to suit that need. Or, you know, you would use the local bypass route as well.
In your planning over the years, sir, is this a common, the emergency personnel, business discussion? This is, it's just, to me, this is a considerably long detour. It's basically, you know, traveling another exit and coming all the way back to that exit on a state road and not a highway. It's a 14, 14 miles on paper doesn't look like much, but to those of us that travel it, it's close to a half hour.
Yeah, sometimes, right. You got to add time, not necessarily miles to, to look into that. Yeah, we've had 30 to 40 mile. We've had, you know, detours where we go up and over. And I'm here familiar with Route 17, up and over the gap, down Champlain Valley and back up and over. But the idea is that, you know, that closure, that particular one was 35 days. So you, but again, you could have other closures that were weekend closures. I mean, it depends on the details of the particular bridge to kind of dictate how quickly we can do that.
And those are the, the top two concerns when we propose closures is the emergency response and businesses. We do hear that a lot.
Yeah. And that's something that we could definitely discuss further as far as, you know, we go down this route, have an emergency services meeting. And if it's, you know, if logistics are just not there, you know, we're not going to force this on the local community. You know, so I'd be curious to, if, you know, emergency services folks, if there was, you know, that there was typically, you know, we give you enough time to do planning, but if there's just no, you know, logical plan that would work for you folks, you know, we'd want to hear about that.
Well, we're not, we're not in a situation here in rural Rockingham to stage an ambulance or stage a forestry truck or a pumper on the other side, I don't believe at this time.
Okay.
We can barely maintain the ones we have to keep them going. I'm just going to check the audience. I know there's a lot of residents that live right over there that came specifically. I think.
Well, I'm on the, I'm on the other end of that too, for emergency purposes myself.
I know. Ben, I don't know. Are any of your neighbors here tonight, Ben?
I know there's a few on there, but I have a few things to say.
Go ahead, yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Very good.
Okay. I know you've hit on the emergency stuff already. So the trailer park is pretty much as close to that bridge as you can get. And like Gattano said, you're talking 15 minutes for an ambulance to go around to get there. Never mind their 10 minutes to get up to where they were before. And their ambulance and rescue squad is going there very consistently. I know you talked about mutual aid, ambulance, et cetera, but that'd be from Springfield and that'd be just as far, if not further. And the other thing is just the added burden on all the folks that live there that are headed to Bellas Falls. You know, every day, I go that way every day for work. I know a lot of my neighbors go that way every day for work. And it's not just time, but it's money, an extra 16 miles.
Well, be in the summer.
An extra 16 miles one way is that much more gas, that much more fuel. Everything. That's all.
Anyone else? I can't really see much. I don't know.
Stefan. Anybody that can hear, make your request known.
There we go. Look at that.
Right now, Laura, I think you're giving up your control of the Zoom session and returning it back to us.
I, I didn't know if it made it easier to see hands and.
All right, let's see. Those who want to speak, please identify yourself. You can use the group chat.
What about Peter? Stefan, you have any questions, comments? Susan, 123, we'll go. Peter?
Yeah. I, I'd have the same concerns about this loss of business and the, and the length of that, this, you know, the detour and the effect on emergency response up there. I mean, you know, if you have a cardiac arrest, and I can tell you I haven't had one, but I've had a triple bypass. So if I had to go someplace in an emergency, I wouldn't want to be waiting 15 minutes. You could, I think the first five minutes I claim is, is the most important.
I mean, I, I feel like everyone understands the importance of business, emergency service, the burden on the folk. So I'll ask one more time, if, if some more planning were involved and perhaps funding, could a, could a one lane, could one lane of travel be, be considered in this project that's three years, three years out with, with state of the art, state of the art platforms, but, but most importantly to, to a lot of folks in this community? Being able to feel safe, knowing that someone will come in an emergency, a business surviving. You know, people find a different route to another business. A lot of times they tend to not come back because that's how things work. So if, if, if some more planning and perhaps funding was, was an option here for a project scheduled tentatively three years out, I would encourage whatever we could do. Pat, how's your hand up and come up to the mic and make sure the button is green, please?
Thanks. I just want to remind the public that Herx Cove, if we have it again, the Herx Cove Festival is 12 to 1400 people, and that's the first weekend in May. So that would make it, you know, a good time for the marina maybe, but we can't afford to lose that with the 12 to 1400 attendees. That's a major event in our community and everybody, every one of those people has to go over the bridge.
That was May 1st?
I have to say, it's generally the first, first, first Sunday in May, I think.
Okay.
Well, I'd just like to add one more thing to that timeframe.
Yes, sir.
From April 1st to Memorial Day is my big push. So anytime that there's a lot of traffic on that road or boats. Yes.
Now, what in October timeframe? Would, how would you feel about that as a business owner?
The, the only time that I have a slowdown time during the timeframe I'm open is basically August.
Okay.
All right. Doug seems to be the only local marina or any place that you can get your boat repaired if you have to do it. Otherwise, you're headed to Keene or some other area that's not even close to here. So I think that's the concern that we're, we're trying to get through. I know my boat goes up there twice a year. So open it up in the spring and I put it away in the winter. So.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Go step up to the mic and make sure the light is green. Thank you.
Dennis Harty, I just wonder if you've checked with the railroad or worked with the railroad to see if they could modify their schedule to maybe one train a day? Or maybe they would like to work on the track or widen that gorge there and decrease the time that you're going to have on the closure?
I, I haven't had any conversations with the railroad to date. I mean, it's not entirely impossible. They're not always the easiest group to work with. And three years from now, who knows what their schedule is going to be? So it's possible that, you know, they, they'll only have one train a day. But certainly that's something that we can look into for reducing the closure duration.
So the option isn't, there's, there's no option for more planning and additional funding for a three year out project to try to eliminate the biggest issue that the community has regarding this project is a full closure for six weeks?
So we can bring it up to management. I mean, this is the scope that's been approved by, by our, you know, our higher up management team. They believed that a closure was doable here, that was feasible. So that would have to be a conversation, you know, higher up than me.
Well, I'd appreciate if you could have that conversation and, and it, this is the first time you've had a conversation with the community that you're, you're coming in to do the work for. So you're hearing all the concerns that they have. Up until now, you've been looking at the map and, and paper and, and it, it made sense that way. But when you hear everyone's concerns this evening, perhaps it makes sense to have another discussion.
Certainly. And we can bring it up to our management staff and, and go from there.
We would appreciate that. Anyone else? Thank you very much for the presentation. Anyone else? Last call.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
It looks like there's a hand raised, Samsung Galaxy.
That we cannot get that individual to undo their mic.
Can you do it?
No, I tried.
This is new to me.
Hey, perfect. You're up. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually live on the south side of the bridge, very, very close to the bridge. My concern is the bedrock that's there. My house, part of my foundation is on that bedrock. And if there's going to be any kind of replacement of stuff that's actually into the bedrock, I don't know how that structure is connected. But any kind of movement probably to widen that might disrupt my actual house. And that's my concern. Along with a couple of neighbors who also are on that same bedrock. And I don't know how exactly it's connected, but it's obviously quite large that we're all on. And that's my concern.
Yeah. And certainly that's something we'll look into, into design. In the design process, we do have a state geologist who will go out and assess the competency of the bedrock. Typically, when we're putting new substructures on bedrock, we just pour directly to the bedrock. We don't expect, you know, blasting out material or anything like that. So certainly we, it's something we'll, we're aware of.
And I would add that we do have provisions in the contract when houses are nearby construction that the contractor does a video monitoring. So they'll go, you know, say you have a foundation, they video your foundation kind of before construction, right? It kind of protects you, protects the homeowner, protects, you know, the contractor, just to make sure, you know, before and after conditions.
Okay. Cause my property is like right on the line. The right of way is on the edge of the bank where my driveway is.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. It's Julie, right? Just for the record.
Julie Noceder, 71 Mississauga.
Thank you. All right. Again, thank you very much and we will move on here. Keep us updated if, if you have any new information, please.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we're going to move item eight up. Bellas Falls Opera House Business Plan Discussion. It will remain number eight. We're just moving it up. We're not going to renumber everything. It will remain number eight. We're just moving it up. We're not going to renumber everything. I'm not sure. I believe everybody received an email, and I don't have anything to say on this. If we could just want to introduce Charlie, or do you want to say anything?
Yes, I started this. I've been struggling to create a business plan.
It is.
Okay.
So we don't have a real plan to move forward with the Opera House under the pandemic. We have this issue of trying to remain profitable, even though we know under the pandemic, our cost structures would increase. We just have a lot of unanswered questions right now. And I kind of threw up my hands and said, I don't have a business plan to move forward. Charlie serendipitously said, well, I have more than a few ideas. And based on his feedback, I immediately thought this is something that warrants the Select Board's attention. So I think with that, I'll recognize Charlie Hunter.
Hi there. Can people hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'll just read the statement that I put together. And then anybody who has any questions, please, please ask. I'm Charlie Hunter. I live in the village and to the Select Board. In my opinion, the town should not be trying to run an entertainment venue. Aside from costing the taxpayers of Rockingham thousands of dollars a year, it distracts from the work of the town manager and the Select Board. Outside entities ran the Bellas Falls Opera House. It was called the Falls Cinema when I was a kid in the 70s from 1927 to 1986. The town only stepped down after that because nobody else wanted the task. Since that era, many towns across the United States have developed models for nonprofit entities, lease municipal auditoriums, and take care of programming and operations. The wild card of COVID has forced opportunity upon us. When the pandemic is over and a degree of normalcy returns, the town of Rockingham needs to be ready to move forward. The Bellas Falls Opera House has the potential to be an economic driver for the downtown as well as an entertainment center for resident and visitor alike. A group of us are working to create a nonprofit entity to lease the Bellas Falls Opera House. We would continue the current policy of showing mainstream current movies and classic films. We would actively seek partnership with area organizations for live theater, concert, and seminar events. The town would still have access to the Opera House and Lower Theater for municipal meetings. We seek to staunch the flow of red ink from the Bellas Falls Opera House on the town ledgers. Once people are again going out to movies and theater, our goal would be to ramp up to paying rent to cover the operational utilities allocated to the Bellas Falls Opera House. If operations are successful, the town would share in the success to the point where the Bellas Falls Opera House would more than pay for itself and help add to the town's bottom line. Imagine being able to make a dinner reservation for before the show. Choose your favorite seats, buy your tickets, order your favorite snack for intermission or afterwards, all from the Bellas Falls Opera House site on your phone. Folks, of course, would still be able to walk up and purchase tickets at the door. But more and more, we are moving in the direction of a cashless society. We will present a more detailed proposal for operations of the Opera House at the next monthly meeting of the Select Board. I would suggest that the Select Board, I would suggest that any other entities who might be interested in operating the Opera House be invited to submit to the town manager operational proposals anytime in the next three weeks. If our proposal meets with your approval, we'd ask that the town work with us to create a lease agreement. We envision the Opera House as a place for excellent and affordable entertainment for residents, as a draw for visitors. It could be a partner with the town, downtown businesses, area arts organizations, schools, to make everybody stronger and make Rockingham an even better place to live. Respectfully, Charlie Hunter, nominal Poo Bah of the entity to be named, Sean Long, board member-to-be, and Marty Gallagher, board member-to-be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the board? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd be a little skeptical about having an outside vendor operating a town facility. If we're going to do it with a theater, we might as well do it for the rec department, the highway department. What the heck? Then we can close down the town and we all have a vacation. My other concern is that I, right now, the main feature of that Opera House is for movies, for people who can afford to go to them. For the price of a theater ticket, at $45, $50, a whack, you can get five or 10 people in at $5 to the movies. So I, I'm not against doing, trying this, but I'd like to see the details to this before I make any further comments or any movement towards this idea. I thought that the current, well, now I would say, I guess, past manager of the theater was doing that with his things, and he was beginning to start to show movies here a couple of weeks ago, but that got canceled by the manager. But that's a discussion for executive session at this point.
Do you want to respond to that, Charlie, or?
Just, I absolutely hear Peter's concerns. We very much would want to keep the policy of showing a mix of current and classic movies and keep it affordable to Rockingham residents especially. Currently, the theater operationally loses considerable money, so it's being subsidized by the taxpayer. And we would certainly look to try to lessen that burden while still keeping it accessible to everybody.
I'll reply to that, Charlie. If you look at the, everybody that's got a financial, I have one here. The rec department loses considerable amount more than the theater does. I think this month or this past year, they lost $100 and somewhat thousand, $131,000. The theater was a lot less than that. So if we're playing business plans, I think we ought to start looking at all.
Well, we're looking at this one right now. So does recycling center. Well, we're talking about the theater tonight. And so I actually had lunch with Charlie the other day. Had a great discussion about a lot of things. And I think one thing that will be important in whatever plan moves forward is the continually offering affordable movies here. And in fact, the triple up, because those are important to a lot of people here. So no one wants to do away with either of those things. I think this is a very, much more broad plan of the potential here in getting out from something that hasn't really been working out for the town. I mean, that's what I want to say, is it's important that those things stay. And I think it's written in the letter that affordable classic movies and ways to go about that. Yes, sir.
Just a correction. Peter is correct. I did stop the movies from occurring. I did that in the capacity as a health officer. I would like to see in any incarnation of the movie starting to have an online presence for selling movie tickets, to redesign the four years so we don't bunch up. I understand we take risks associated with highway and other functions because they are essential functions. My concern is that if we weren't able to operate a movie theater effectively, that kind of, we would, there would be a special place for us if we ended up having an outbreak because of movies. That's not where I wanted to go. We had some tentative plans to separate folks so that we could get them through here safely. You saw what we, or you may have heard what we did for the village meeting. That was effectively reusing the Opera House completely different and bringing in people from different entrances, et cetera, trying to break up crowds as best we can. That's something that regardless of the model, we're going to have to see somebody able to do that. More electronic sales, less point of contact, either direct or indirect. Even the old, and I love doing this with my kids, the excitement of sitting out on the sidewalk, bunched up with everybody, we can't operate like that anymore. So we have to figure out how to control these crowds in the building and outside the building.
Susan, Ben?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's an interesting idea that we need more information on. I'd like to hear from Charlie or others who proposed this about how this has worked in other towns. Because I know many other towns have a similar system where they, the theater is operated by a nonprofit entity. I'd like to find out more information from those towns at a future date to see how it works for them and what are some of the issues that they've had to deal with. I think it's an interesting concept that we need to explore further.
Ben or Stefan?
Yeah, I would agree. I'm not against it at all. I just think we definitely need some more information, but I look forward to hearing that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more information.
Yeah, I would too. And I mean, there's a lot of, another tone here. There's a lot of information in that letter, and to me, it shows the potential of what could happen. The biggest is the biggest obstacle right now is COVID. So, you know, if we could go see a variety of entertainment, I'm using myself as a resident of the village in the town of Rockingham. I could go see choices of music, a play, or a movie two to three times a week and pick my seats from my phone, order dinner. So that was something we talked about. You could incorporate local, I think there's a lot to explore here and definitely look into it. But you would stimulate the economy by having two to three to four restaurants involved with having delivered food items, still having concessions. But the bottom line is, there's a lot of things, but you would guarantee yourself not losing money simply by signing a lease and explore, if it went well for this organization, they would in fact increase the what we're getting paid. That's it. I mean, there's a lot to discuss. It's a fantastic idea.
Todd, can I just add one more thing? We'd also have to know, I don't know whether, I mean, Shannon has a zillion things on her plate, but we, there is the issue of the bond that is put on that theater, the renovations that were done and how that financially worked out with anyone if it was leased. So there's a lot of other working parts that would have to be considered.
Okay, excellent. Good point. Yes, sir.
Chuck, I think you do make some valid points as far as the COVID goes. And I agree with the rest of the board that we do need to see quite a bit more information on this. Like I say, I'm not opposed to the idea. I just want to put a pitch in for the low-income people that can't afford a ticket.
And Peter, it will, for the entire board, I don't want to proceed with this unless I have a clear direction from you all. And if that's the case, then I will make sure resources are available, that we work with Charlie closely, and that we present a credible option for you to consider at the next meeting.
Do you need a consensus? I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward with more information. Does the rest of the board feel like they're in favor of moving forward to get us more information, including the bond issue, more numbers? Like, my understanding was somewhere I saw these numbers recently, close to 70% of the folks weren't from this town that came to the movies. In fact, most of them are from the other side of the river, as far as referencing low income. We offer it here, and the majority of the folks are not attending now. But I'm in favor of getting more information and seeing where this leads.
Can I just stop in a second? There's no action that I am advocating for tonight. This is just being informational about something that we are going to put together. And I would love to be able to work with Chuck and the town so that we have as much information, accurate information, as possible. You know, and if the town wants to keep the current policy in place, more power to it. It isn't the direction that I would go, but I just want to present this other idea and see if it is felt to be reasonable.
Yes, thank you very much. Gary has his hand up here in the audience. And Chuck, it says one new message. I don't know what that means. Yes, Gary. Your mic is green?
Yes. Does that mean it's working?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it sounds like a great proposal, economic development-wise. One concern and why it's a great thing that we didn't run the movies yet. What we've seen in religious institutions is the buildup of viral load indoors with a lot of people staying there for a while. There's two units on the roof that do air exchange, but they, they're based on carbon monoxide and temperature differential, and control technologies cannot even hook up to the program. Now, apparently, it's a Windows XP is required to use that. And so they can't even measure the air exchange we have, how many cubic feet per minute. So identifying that fresh air exchange and making sure that we can control that would be a crucial part of opening safely with COVID.
Well, I mean, I think the whole, we don't know when that's going to change. We don't know. So that, you know, I said it just three minutes ago, that the real issue or a very big, can't really do much until, you know, with COVID right now, it's, nothing's going to be moving forward very soon in that building, in that room. All right. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Charlie.
All right. Moving on, we're on number two now. Development Office Grants Overview.
Gary, I think that's you.
Is that you, Gary?
Yes.
You're up.
One item. So for the grant overview, one of the items is the municipal planning grant that set up the Memorial Fireman's Park. In order to complete that, needs a resolution from the board strictly administrative to change from Wendy to Chuck for municipal authorizing and from Chuck to Gary for administrator. I don't know if it, do you have the? So that resolution is set up and written for tonight?
Yes.
Does this resolution have anything to do with the design function of that park?
Yes.
The reason, I was going to say this for a warrant discussion, but on one of the warrants in here, there's a bill for Julie Masurvy for $1,085 for a park design. I remember when we gave the town, the village of Saxon River, some material to do their park. There is an agreement that she would, or a statement that she was going to provide free service to design that park. And here we are paying her $1,000. So I'm just curious what happened with that. And it wasn't done with your tenure, so it was done maybe two years ago, I'm going to guess, when Wendy was first here or something. I remember the conversation.
I can't speak to the prior agreement. There's a municipal planning grant that we got 100% funding for the design and planning of a memorial park, essentially establishing a square that was started with me and the planning commission. We got the money, and we're at the tail end of that grant, finishing it up. And so that's entirely grant-funded. Janet Bryant is the landscape architect, not Julie, but we found somebody who is actually, she neighbors that park. She's up in the Flatiron Exchange. So that was a contract. She was awarded that contract in a low bid. She was successful, and we're finishing that grant up. So am I answering your question?
Well, it's
Yeah, she works on that shingle.
$1,085 is Fireman's Park, so I'm just wondering if it made out to Julie Merserby, and now you're telling me someone else did the work?
Yes. Nor is it your turn to speak?
Janet works under Julie's direction, yes.
I thought that was the case, but I mean, I'm just wondering why, if we were offered a free service, why are we paying for it? I guess maybe that's the thing. They've come all wet on that one.
But it didn't, did it answer the question that it was grant-funded?
Yeah, but
And that person works for Janet, who?
I never did think to ask, would you work for me for free? I just asked, I did a bid process? Oh, okay. Yeah.
Maybe that was never put out, you know, when this park was going forward, that that was, an offer was made in exchange for the material we gave the builders Saxon River to do their park.
So they have been providing some gratis work with the outdoor gathering spaces and the interim zoning bylaw. And I know that's not the same thing, but those items are not grant-funded and would have come from our pocket, and they just, they did just cover that. I mean, just provide it at no cost. So basically, the items tonight are just to, you've had spreadsheets in the past that give a sense of the projects, the grant projects we have, what kinds of funds they are, what sponsored work we'll be doing. You know, the electric vehicle charging stations, the pump track at the rec area, the cigarette butt holders and trash bins in the downtown. And so as you, those are ones that, as you know, we all have, we've been granted, and those projects will be moving forward this summer and fall. And the police and fire station Lula Lift, fire equipment, those are still pending. And then currently about to award a grant for BFADC feasibility study for a tenant manufacturing facility at the Robertson Paper Site. And then potential things that we'll be exploring that you would see come before you in September and October, trails and by this bridge grants. There's regional economic development grants and recreational facilities grants that the town could apply for, and we're gathering input and comment on those. And that's about it. I guess I'll answer any questions you have, if there are any.
Anybody have any questions for Gary?
Gary, did you say we had to pass some, we have to pass something to put Chuck on the paperwork now?
Yes, there's an amended resolution sheet, and you should have it in your email from this afternoon. If someone here wants to do it, I passed out some forms with it.
On here, Gary, there's a
Yeah, it says, "Whereas the municipality of Rockingham has applied for funding as provided"
Whereas?
Yep, gotcha. Oh wait, that was a bot. "Whereas the municipality of Rockingham has applied for funding as provided for in the year in the FY '20 Budget Act and has received an award of funds under said provisions. And whereas the Department of Housing and Community Development has offered a grant agreement to this municipality for said funding. And whereas the municipality has undergone a change in municipal staff, which necessitates updating the Department of Housing and Community Development to allow new municipal staff access to the grant files. Now therefore be it resolved, one, that the legislative body of this municipality has entered into and agreed to the requirements and obligations of this grant program, including a commitment to match funds. Two, that Charles Wise, the interim municipal manager, who is either the chief executive officer as defined by 10 VSA 638-8, or is a select board member, the town manager, the city manager, or the town administrator is hereby designated to serve as the municipal authorizing official for the Grant Management Online System and TeleGrants, and to execute the grant agreement and other such documents as may be necessary to secure those funds. To be, reads alternate, authorizing official for redundancy, that we authorize Shannon Burbala, Finance Director, who is either the chief executive officer or CEO as defined by 10 VSA 638-8, or a select board member, is the town manager, the city manager, or the town administrator, is hereby designated to serve as the municipal authorizing official for the Grant Management Online System and TeleGrants, and to execute the grant agreement and other such documents as may be necessary to secure these funds. To see that Gary Fox, Development Director, is hereby designated as the Grant Administrator, the person with the overall administrative responsibility for the Municipal Planning Grant Program activities related to the application and any subsequent grant agreement provisions. So therefore, I make the motion, I guess, to move that resolution."
A second.
Motion been made and seconded to move this resolution. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Stefan. Great job reading that.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Okay, thank you, Gary. Is this the original? Is this the one? I got several of them. This will be the original. Okie doke.
I noticed, Gary, there that my name is spelled incorrectly, so I'll correct that with the stroke of my pen.
It's a tricky one.
Could be dangerous.
Okay, number, item number three. Highway Department, this one falls under, this one is specific to Legion Parking Lot Improvement. And we have some information in the packet here. Chuck, you have anything to say?
I think my memo summarizes it cleanly. This is rather serendipitous that we would have in a butter doing their parking lot at the same time. And as mentioned, we could solve some drainage issues, enjoy a little bit of economy of scale, but have a really nice project this fall. We have money within the budget to handle this, but it's really up to the select board's discretion.
Yes, sir.
This is, this item was not included in the budget when we did the budget. So I guess, how are the funds being obtained?
We are currently under budget in the Highway Department and would have the funds available. If you need a more precise answer, I would have to defer to Shannon. But we did get confirmation, because I wasn't going to ask you guys if we didn't have money for it.
I guess my point is, is the availability of funds due to the furloughs and layoffs?
What you're talking about was last fiscal year. That doesn't have as much impact, but we're running lighter on expenses across all categories this fiscal year.
Okay, what type of dollar amount are we looking at?
$7,800.
$7,800?
Not to exceed.
The $7,800 includes a 15% contingency, I'm thinking that will be in the six range.
And just for clarification, I saw the business client had chosen their contractor. Would this be done at the same time? That's the whole, most of the purpose of this project?
Yeah, I see this as, they chose Hodgkins and Sons to do the sub base. Their bases, it's all ripped up. It's completely destroyed. So once they prep that, one paver will come in and do it all.
Andy had been out and measured it, and I saw one of the recent paving companies measuring it, actually. It wasn't Andy. And then, just one question, have they verified the type of planter system to separate the two parking areas?
The idea is to basically mimic the planter system that we have in the frontage there, but this would be on their nickel, the private owner. We would get rid of the steel track, and they would put up something comparable.
And it's, at this time, only purpose for them is parking?
Okay, yeah, that lot has to serve parking. They're under zoning permits. They would have to get a lot of changes to be able to use it for anything else.
What's the drainage situation there? Is there currently a drain there now?
You have a catch basin that's one of the higher things on that lot. It doesn't really serve too well, so that'll have to be worked on a little bit. But that's part of the degradation pattern in the asphalt you see. You see delamination, water just sets there, and then in the wintertime, it's packed with ice.
So any work on that drain is not going to involve getting into the street?
This would be entirely on site.
It's long to the street right now. I think they're going to try to improve it.
I'm just asking the question, so the work on a drain, is it going to involve opening up the street?
It does not. We'd right, we'd right go up to the, excuse me, the concrete sidewalks. Hopefully, we do cure some of that problem we have where water just drains right out onto that road, and you have ice buildup.
Susan, any questions?
Yeah, well, my questions also are around the drainage issues. Are we certain that just repaving it and dealing with the, you know, the pavement issues will fix the drainage? Or is there other work that has to be done there that we're not aware of regarding drainage?
In my discussions with Andy, most of it is going to be cured by the paving.
And then this would have to go out to bid, I presume? Is it of the expense that would have to go out to bid?
Yes.
And then we're certain, the other question is, we're certain that we know where all of the right-of-ways are at this point?
I sent Andy your email and asked him to go line by line through it. He did, and he was confident that we're all within the public's right-of-way.
Okay, and then my other concern was the one that was raised by Peter is where the funding is coming from this. I would not want to see this coming out of our paving budget and affect other roads that are already on the schedule or in the plans for the future, so.
You know, when you introduce a seven grand cost in the highway budget, that's relatively small, but that is a valid point. If you move forward on something like this now, we do adjust priorities. Paving, as you know, is constantly being adjusted. Right now, we had overages in Griswold Drive, and now we're examining whether or not Center Street can be moved along to next year. So this is always a moving target. So yes, there might be some movement of priorities, but well within the budget. If this isn't a priority, then you could just decide to drop it. From my point of view, I did not want to not give the board this option. So I didn't want to see something like this happen and just assume you didn't want to hear it. You have it, and whether you choose to act is your pleasure.
I mean, I've sat here, and previous Public Works Director would say he wants to spend $80,000. We have it in the budget, and I've never had two board members question where in the budget.
Well, the question is, well, the question is, is budget, sorry.
We've never asked where in the budget. We approved $80,000 like that two months ago.
Well, we have a paving budget, and this is, if it's coming, I'm just curious, because the residents approve the budget and the budget lines, and I just want to make sure that we're not
I understand, Susan.
Going from one line to the other, that's all.
I understand your question. I was pointing out that we didn't have a retaining wall budget, and we approved $80,000 like that without this many questions as to where the money was coming from.
Well, we haven't yet asked the questions.
Any comment, Ben? We want to move on? Somebody want to make a motion?
Just one more question. Is this going to affect, you just mentioned, Chuck, that we had an overrun on Griswold Drive. Do we know what that amounted to?
We're trying to tabulate that right now. As you know, that project was just being finished. The overage was, I don't know how to phrase this, but what we engineered did not come to pass in the field. So we found that we could not get away with the numbers for the paving. So we had to make changes, you know, right then and there. So we're still trying to get all that stuff processed, and I'll get you an answer next month.
Okay, I just, I'm going to back up Sue on the fact that I just want to make sure there's some other streets in town that are in pretty poor shape, and we had them on the paving schedule, and I just want to make sure I wasn't going to get bumped because of this project.
You could make a motion to that effect, which says no bumping of paving projects. If the money's there, great. If it's not, then don't do it.
If the board doesn't choose to make this motion, where does the railroad guardrail? Is that ours or theirs? Would that still be removed in that private party's project? Do you know?
That would be my second. So I've had to deal with, I think, two or three car accidents there, that, those train.
No, I'm saying
So we would probably want to remove it, period. And that's like an $800 cost, and then we would ask them to put in the planners anyway.
Well, they're paving. I don't know where the boundaries are, but wouldn't they need to pave right up to those or just past them?
That's right. That's probably the only thing I feel strongly about is any chance that we can get those things out of there? Because it just, any car that's ever come in contact, well, you guys know this. It's not too kind.
The whole thing makes sense to me. It would improve the whole drainage. It's a horrible mess over there, especially in the winter. And you're going to have brand-new people investing their time and money in this project, and it makes sense to me to coordinate it with the same timeline.
That guardrail is ours.
Regrettably.
The railroad one there that we referred to here?
That's right.
Yes.
It is.
And I just have one more question, sorry. The planter boxes, that would meet any type of code of being a barrier between a parking lot and an abutting property?
Yeah, you see that design, obviously, it's an improvement from the train stuff, but that, yeah, that would meet a design standard. And it would be entirely on both property, and so they would have the liability.
So they're not, Chuck, they're not going to replace the existing planter that's shown here? They're going to put one similar to that on their side, is what you're saying?
That's right. Our planter, which is on the frontage there, serves as like articulate the access in the sidewalk. That's in good shape and doesn't need to go anywhere.
This is ours, this one. They're going to take away the I-beam railroad and put in a planter. Anything else?
I think he needs a motion if we're going to go ahead with this. Is that correct?
Yes.
You want to make one? You want me to make one? Mr. Chairman, I would move that we proceed with the Legion Parking Lot Improvement to the amount not to exceed $7,800, and with a caveat that it does not bump another paving project that we have already got in the paving schedule.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Legion Parking Lot Improvement not to exceed $7,800 and not to bump another asphalt project scheduled for this season. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. So number four is Highway. I do know that, I believe Andy is bringing his boy to become a member of the United States Navy. So thank you for your service and your time. He's not here. Do you want to?
Yeah, and you're going to have to, this is Plan B. Andy, I met with him on Monday. He was extremely excited to give me an update, which I will now pass on to you. Hyde Street, we are working to get an easement. As you know, As you know, we have to close that road for the drainage, and we have to build a new road. We're looking to do that in the next two or three weeks. We're also going to send out a butters notices and make sure that everyone is aware of what's gonna happen there. The sands, I believe it's something like forty five hundred.
Question of the Hyde Street. Did you say a plan in three weeks or a road?
Road, the road's sort of there as it connects up and over.
Checking with the butters and making it passable in the next three weeks?
As a detour, yes, they'll be out there starting it.
Roger.
Bucky Adams has already ordered everything he needs for the project, so right now it's just waiting for the schedule to come up.
Okay.
Are you exactly requiring a right of way over there? Isn't that, is that a private road there between Hyde and Bromley Way?
Yeah, so I had to do the research, we went back as far as we could go, and at no point in time was that ever a public highway. You would want to say it is, and it is not. So that means we need a private easement for the purpose of building that road.
And is that gonna entail funds, unfortunately? And if so, are they included in this budget or the?
We discussed putting that into the Hyde Hill project.
This predates me if there's any funds.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying.
I'm saying, we, we discussed it, and I'm pretty positive, talked about the funding for it. Are you talking about the extra work with the?
Well, the right of way, I mean, I mean.
My approach has always been not to ask for funds, you know, but to be very accommodating to the landowner.
I don't understand, just trying to see if the right of way, but that, I hope it's not gonna delay the darn project. We end up doing this in October or something, that's when it's cold weather, and then, you know, the delays keep building up, that's all.
Yeah, and it's worse than that, because the flow of High Brook is what is, that's the tail that wags the dog. We cannot be there in a high-flow state.
Right.
I know it's a lot of work, and you guys are, I just had that one question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hall and Sand, that has been completed. Roadside mowing is ongoing, they've had some problems with the mower, but nevertheless, they keep soldiering on. Line striping, I think you guys have seen them just about everywhere, they're trying to come to finish that, which is going very well. Scott Bingham is touching up the gravel roads, he just, he has done an extraordinary job. We are still getting thank yous from people who say, I've lived on my such and such road for thirty, forty years, and I've never seen it like that. So thank you, Scott Bingham, for taking gravel road grading to that next level. You've seen photos of the new equipment arrivals, that ten-wheel is gorgeous, and that's, we're taking ownership of that. The paving project update, I just mentioned that as part of the parking area. So we had some overages, and I'm working to get some definite numbers for you all to look at. Is there any questions on these items or anything regarding highway?
So it was our guys that did the stretch of Rockingham Street by the train tracks, by the firehouse? With that arm machine that mowed over the bank? Do you know?
That I don't, is that?
I saw Ben looking at it the other day, and I was looking at it.
Yeah, so was.
It was, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was a tricky. Is that new?
One thing about the roadside mowing there, I have one thing about that that me and Chief McGinnis were talking about, is possibly getting in touch with the railroad. Chief McGinnis said that he's sure they would let us, and seeing how far we could reach up the bank with the mower. To get that, just because that's getting so grown up, and it'd be a lot of work by hand. So maybe seeing how much further you can get from the bottom, because it is tippy reaching over the top there.
Maybe we get a helicopter to crew soon.
Right, yeah, that would work good, too.
Asked them before the railroad did come in, I don't, can't remember, was it three or four years ago? And they, they did that suction down below the, on Westminster Street, that bank, I don't know if they did anything up on the other end.
Two separate railroads.
It's getting really pretty overgrown down there, like Ben said, maybe it'd be worth contacting them. That was it, any other questions? Miles have something?
Yeah. No, that's someone else.
Are you good, Sue? Okay, thank you, thank you guys for all your hard work. Been hot, we appreciate it.
I got a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Wade.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
Two things, you can?
Sometimes, when you talk.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
It would be nice to be able to add on to the list for the highway guys. The streets, the streets in the village of Bellas Falls are pretty disgusting. And I know we have a street sweeper that very rarely gets used. And it's just, it's long overdue that the time comes that we start taking, keeping our streets cleaner than they are when we have that capability. So I'd like to see that at some point, go, get on to the list, and maybe it'd be more of a regular occurring thing than once or twice a year.
I, I agree, and.
It's horrible.
I believe I saw it out last week, but I've said this almost every year about the simple fact that we own it. And to do it several times a year, I had folks also saying that to me a couple of weeks ago. And last year, four or five different people said, could we sweep the streets? Could we sweep the streets? So if it's possible to work that into the schedule more, I'm all for it. I, I hear you, Wade, for sure.
Yeah, and the other thing is, so they graded Crowdy Drive a couple of months, I don't know, six weeks ago. And I would disagree with the manager. Crowdy Drive was far superior before they graded it six or eight weeks ago than it is now.
What happened to it, did it get rolled?
I don't believe so. Part of the problem, I was told, was that the greater operator was not able to do the, do it the way that he wanted to, because the superior told him not to do it that way. I don't know, all I'm saying is, if they'd never touched it, it'd be better than it is now. So not every road is peachy as the manager would like to think that it there. I just wanted to point that out.
We'll prioritize street sweeping, and we'll get somebody out there on Crowdy Drive to try to improve it, okay?
Yeah, you don't have to run right up there, I'm just making a comment that, you know, not everyone is a hundred and ten percent like you like all of us, believe to be, led that they are. And the street, the street thing, you know, we have, we have weeds and grass that are sometimes a foot high, that grow up between the curb and the asphalt. I understand that it's that time of year, and you can't, certainly can't control all of that, for sure. But if the streets were kept even somewhat cleaner than they are, and the debris not allowed to, you know, build up on the, along the curb and whatnot, some of that would be lessened. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, number five. Recycle Center Committee Recommendations Discussion. Would you like to take the lead on this one?
I'll just open it up, Peter requested that this be an agenda item. We had the committee working for the last two months, give or take, and the summary is what they provided for us to work on. This is something that I consider a sort of my marching orders. I guess I'll just open it up to the floor if there's any comments.
Do you have anything, I thought I had come up. Well, as you know, by the email, we've lost the director down there, the manager, Gary Droger's resigned. So we are headless horsemen down there currently. And three or four of the volunteers that were key to that operation have gone with them. So Wednesday, we don't have anyone to run the scale down there, so I guess we don't take any C and D. I haven't heard of anybody else that's left. I think there's just Donnie, Eric, who was paid, and Brad Nelson, who was paid. I think Bob Fogg is staying, so that cashier is staying. The report itself is sort of vague. Doesn't say what we're gonna do or what, what proposal is there. It just sort of gives an overview of the problems, but doesn't say what recommendations the committee came up with. In, in my estimation, that's one of the reasons back a while ago when it was started, I asked why it was a handpicked committee, because from what I've been told, there was no specific charge given to that committee as to what they're supposed to do. So all the individuals went at it with their own idea. So maybe that's why that report is so vague. That's just my opinion, I'm just looking at it. So I don't know where we go from here. I guess my question is, are we going to be open Wednesday down there?
I'll be there Wednesday.
That seems separate than what the, what the agenda item is, you're talking about the?
I'm talking about the report, but there's a reason that those people left is because of that report.
It is?
Yes, it is. Didn't you read the, what Gary?
I sure did, I wish he'd have been here tonight to discuss it.
Well, why wasn't he invited? Why wasn't he invited? Ask the manager why he wasn't invited.
Don't talk when I'm talking, if you talk, then I'll talk.
Go for it, then.
It would be better if he was here to discuss it, rather than sending us all an individual email with his version of, of how he feels. It seems pretty clear what the recommendations are here, I just read it again, as far as the report goes.
It doesn't say, it doesn't have any steps in there, what are we doing?
They're listed in order.
What is, what does it say? Go ahead, tell me what it tells you.
It's written right here.
What does it tell you? Does it tell you we're gonna look at, or we're doing anything with the pricing down there? Does it tell you we're gonna change the traffic pattern? Does it tell you anybody's contacted the state Vermont on Route Five and find out about the traffic pattern out there? I spent sadly directing traffic out there.
You, you want to keep talking, or you want to let me talk?
I'll let you talk, but you gotta let me ask my questions.
You keep interrupting me.
I'm not interrupting you, you're interrupting me.
Okay. So it's a recommendation by the committee, it's not direct orders, the committee doesn't order the select board to do anything. It's not how committees work. Seems pretty clear what the recommendations are here.
Gaetano, I mean, we're, we're discussing this, but I, I don't know if this went out, if it's posted to the website for other people to see what the recommendations were, just for the audience members, the citizens. But if we're going to discuss the individual recommendations, I do not think the recommendation of both putting the cardboard separate and selling it is a wise way to go. Other towns have not found it as much of a cash gathering operation as it might seem on, on, at first. And it would involve a lot more investment in time and staffing and to put that into operation. It just doesn't seem like it's feasible for where we're at, at this point. I feel like it's going backwards, but that's just my.
Good, I'll, I'll respond to that, Susan, and I think the, the reason that came up is I went to the Walpole Center for, with, with the committee and saw how they operate. And what they do is they bail clean cardboard, and a company pays and picks it up for no charge, takes it somewhere and pays them for their product. What we do currently is pay a company to come and pick it up and pay a different company to dispose of it. We're paying twice, Walpole is receiving revenue in both cases, simply by separating a greasy piece of cardboard from clean cardboard. It's, 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 it was a, there's an investment in one baler, which would be a good investment. You could do multiple materials in, they're set up because they have multiple balers, because they've been doing it for quite a while. They don't lose money over there, is, is, is. It's pretty clear to me why they're doing things over there the way they do it. They're selling their product and having someone pick it up, neither of them are charging them money. We pay someone to truck it, as you see, the, we just got triple T contract again, and then we pay to get rid of it. And this is during COVID, they're still doing this. They're still able to separate. We're now throwing it all in one bin and paying a lot of money to get rid of it. That's my experience with the, with the recommendation to do things differently with some of the material. Anything else, Sue?
Peter has his hand up, I see.
Yep.
Hate to disagree with you, Gaetano, but I visited that facility myself under, under, like, from them. And I talked directly to the manager. He told me cardboard is not their cash cow. Their cash cow is the same as our cash cow is, it's in the garbage. Their bag garbage is making them the money, not the cardboard. He says the prices fluctuate so much that they end up storing it. They evidently have a facility, what they do is they store it and.
I know what they do.
They put it in trailers, and I'm not sure that they're renting those trailers from Mr. G.
Nope.
Gorman's, excuse me, sir, I'm talking, so don't interrupt.
I was correcting you.
I have, have here Walpole's budget for their recycling center. You ever seen it? Maybe ought to look at the town report. Their budget is running three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for their operation, and their revenue is only half of that, hundred and seventy thousand. But yet, we're being told they're making money. I asked that, the manager over there, a specific question. The figures that I got out of the town report, correct? He said, yes, those numbers that are in there are correct. So I don't know how they're making money if they spent, spending three hundred and sixty thousand dollars and only taking in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of revenue. The cardboard, if you're thinking of doing, like, my estimation, I've been working down here for two years. The best thing you can do is separate it in a separate dumpster, because if you look at our contract with Alpha Waste, all our recyclables belong to the person that's taking the material out of the hauler. We can't take it out for two years, we signed a contract, unless you want to break the contract. So I'm at a loss of what, where, where, where we're going with this thing. I don't think trying to buy balers and more equipment down there, and we don't have storage currently down there, a storage place. Walpole has a facility that's twice the size of ours in acreage, I've got the pictures here, I can show them. They're almost three, three acres over there, we got one and a half. They have a big building, they separate everything over there. They take tin cans, aluminum cans, returnables, non-returnables, bottles, everything. There's, you should go over there and spend a little, a couple of minutes and watch how they do it. It's, it's labor, it's intensive, and they pay full-time people over there. Their manager makes forty eight thousand dollars plus benefits plus a pension. The same with the rest of those people over there, they get paid money also, and they're also on the pension and benefits wagon. So you can imagine what it's gonna cost us, where we only pay our manager seventeen thousand dollars a year. So it, it just boggles my mind that, that, that they're making money there. I, I just don't see it in the numbers.
I don't know if we want to spend a whole lot of time talking about Walpole, we talked about the one sixty seven being the recycle plus the trash. I was in attendance when we were looking at cardboard with Ben Hoy and Gaetano, and he used that term, cash cow. One of our committee members actually works full-time at the Walpole Recycle Center. So Shayna Hakey actually signed off on this report. So we did the best we can, but the, the big thing that I think the committee learned, and I don't want to speak for them exactly, but we're not in the recycle business, and certainly the board is not in the recycle business. it, we're not in the recycle business, um, and, and certainly the board is not in the recycle business. We were just seeing a, a number of occasions where they were able to generate revenue, and that's probably the take-home message, whether you or I can go over the numbers and, and, and try to scrutinize Walpole's operation. That's not as fruitful as, as understanding that they were very entrepreneurial. And if we get somebody in-house with that kind of direction and leadership in mind, then I would expect the select board to be routinely approached with item X, and this is how we're gonna make our money back. Um, the goal for the Walpole folks is in fact trying to get cost recovery as well as making recycle numbers. They're kind of ideologically, um, guided that the more that they can recycle to save the earth, it's the better. And, and that's the kind of guidance that we want to see in, in a manager. I did look to Gary to say, this is our report. Um, can I have your support on it? And instead I got the resignation. So, and he was a logical person with 20 years in service to know how to take this to the next level. But that, so that wasn't the response I expected, but nevertheless, that's what we've been given. So I'm hopeful to move in this direction. I'm hopeful to give you all an opportunity to see some of these details that need to be seen.
So that begs the question, you just mentioned this 20 years of experience. Why wasn't he invited to be on the committee?
This, um, group, and in fact, I'm, I'm pretty excited about the model. It should be even directed to my program. When you have a third party just evaluate things. Um, when you have that committee interviewing Gary and, and asking him his opinions. Uh, the committee was selected for a, a variety of reasons, but it was, it was always meant to be, as I understood, and I inherited this, as an outside review. Um, we know what Gary thinks because Gary has actually been doing it for quite a bit of time. This was to try to get a fresh perspective and see if there was any room for improvement.
And Laura, I don't know if I'm gonna refresh my memories, but, uh, this subject came up three or four years ago. I think Monty Barnett was the manager. Uh, the same thing about, came up about making that a profit-producing operation. We're providing a service here, not trying to make a profit. The object is to be breaking even. So it's not costing us a thing. So if you're, if you think you're gonna make money on this, I think also there's a stat that says a municipality is not supposed to be making a profit on any operation they got going. Uh, I, I'll find that, and I can give it to Chuck somewhere along the line. But if that's the case, then we ought to be looking at all the other departments that are doing the same thing. We ought to be looking at revenue at the rec department. And the same argument's gonna be coming there. It's a service. We have to provide service. We don't have the rec. We won't have anybody coming here to enjoy the, the, the facilities we got. So we went, there's a, changed a single stream down there because they were doing all this separation project, and it was too labor-intensive. We couldn't get enough people to work on it. And that's the other half of the problem. And you can't get down there and spend two, an hour and a half interviewing people down there on two different occasions that I saw them. And, and figure you've got the whole so problem solved. It's not that easy. Traffic patterns are a circus, but how else are you gonna arrange it?
I don't think, you, you done?
I mean, for now, wait till you're gonna oppose your comments, but go ahead.
That's a great attitude, Peter. You don't even know what I'm gonna say and you're gonna oppose it. I'm done. I'm done here.
So I have a question. I mean, are we expected to make any actions on any of these? Or this is just a, I mean, not at this point. This is just something to first pass on discussing.
It never, it never was, it never was designated as action. It's a report.
Excuse me.
So we don't have to listen to any, uh, any, we don't have to pay attention to any of their suggestions if we don't want. Okay.
Just like most committees.
Can I make one last comment and then we'll finish this? If everybody, if everybody remembers the, the email we got from the, uh, manager. The email said he was gonna implement changes. And here we have our chairman saying that we're not gonna do anything. We're just discussing. Somebody's gotta clarify that. Are we gonna make changes or are we gonna sit here and discuss this?
I'm gonna be, um, looking to make changes, particularly in leadership. I have no choice but to do that. As you said, it's a rudderless ship, so we, we've got to get cracking. Um, I'll be at the recycle center tomorrow. But that's not, you know, my full-time gig, so we've got to figure out who can lead this, um, org, that department.
Well, the biggest thing right now is you don't have any. I think you can operate currently with what few people you got left there to do the recyclables. It's gonna be the rubbish. But, uh, if you're gonna, you can't waste stuff. And we can take mattresses and couches because that's a pay item. But anybody's gotta weigh tra, uh, your construction debris. Nobody knows how to run that scale. Eric has been trained. But as Gary told me the other day, he can't process one customer. He gets lost in the transaction. Somebody's gotta go and help him. We don't have anybody to go and help him. It's not my job to go and run that scale either. It's not my job to be a volunteer down there. It's not my job being a select board member to run the operation down there.
So, uh, I will say the last thing I wanted to say. Um, I know so many people that quit going there. We have voicemail. I have voicemail recordings, the emails, to uh, folks who refuse to go there from the way they're treated to the way the place is run. We've heard for years about the traffic and the traffic and the traffic. Nothing gets done. So, and, and we don't have anyone to sit here and talk to tonight who's running the place because they responded privately in an email where, where I can't respond to that. Um, I've noticed for months, perhaps years, when I first sat on this board four years ago. My first question was, how's this place lose $160,000 a year? Everyone says, well, that's, that's the way it goes. That's the way we do it around here. That's the way we've always done it. And then, uh, I said, let's come up with the placards like everywhere else. So what, what, what we need to do is incorporate change, and, and may it be small change. We need change down there. From the way you pull in to the way we use that building to all of it. And I, I can't tell you the amount of times I've hung out down there, observed things as a chair of the select board, as a select board member, as a Rockingham resident, and watched people. And I've said this to the past manager. I've said it to the, the past facilities manager, time and time and time and time again, about folks disposing of trash that didn't have stickers. About folks disposing of bagged trash without paying for it. And, and nothing was ever done, time and time and time and time again. Where they sit on their rear end and smoke cigarettes. And, uh, how many times had someone said something about them sitting down smoking cigarettes? So cha, change is a good thing. When something's not working, you need to incorporate change. You have anything, Stefan?
Yeah, I'd like more information on, on the cardboard. Um. I know what happens in, in my neck of the woods to the north of here. But I'm also curious as to what the, the, that type of equipment would cost. That's something that you need storage for, that you can't leave out in the weather. Um, the other thing I want to comment on here is, uh, the bag idea. Um, I, the few times that I've been down there, because I pay to have mine hauled away from my home. Um. But I, I use the, the heavier mill bag. If we're gonna do anything in the future at all with a bag, it ought to be a he, a nice heavy mill. Thicker, thicker bag. But personally, I like using my own bags and I pay for what I haul. You know.
I think, off, going off memory, I think a baler is 10 grand. Or you could get a baler. That would be my, off of memory.
There was used ones for six or seven.
And the, and the, the thing with colored bags, here's how it would eliminate a lot of what goes on down there. I was down there Wednesday. I had the same experience. Uh, I watched the process and it, then it got to my turn. I put the bags in the thing and I, I guess it's a, no one's watching you, so it's an honest program. If I go over and put tickets in the little, this, this is our system we're using. So if you have a guy on each side, whether they be paid or volunteer, to just not let a bag that isn't purple, you don't have to say, hey, did that, did you just put five tickets in the little plastic tub? You say, hey, that, that black trash bag, that, that's gonna cost you whatever, $7. We, we, and then you, all the way to the, to the discussion that's been had about, you put them in lease eyes, you put them in the town hall, you put them in places, people pick up the bags. It, it would eliminate a lot of the whole going to the little shed where you leave your car here and then you walk over there and then you walk back, then that you supposedly rip up some tickets and put them in the thing, or you just drive through and don't pay and unload half your pickup truck for nothing. There's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of potential to improve the, the the whole thing.
No, I'm just saying, it's, it's a lot of things to think about. If you're gonna be, for example, I like a contractor bag. I don't care if it's my regular household garbage or if I'm doing a project because I don't have to worry about the bottom falling out on it and playing 52 pickup. But I mean, if we're gonna get into this, we need to give it a lot of thought and uh, to me, it's the quality of a bag. I know it's a small part of the operation, but, um.
I don't know the whole story with the bags or how they work or what they do, but there's someone that can answer that question. I'm not a recycling expert. I'm speaking as a board member who looks at the budget and someone who goes there at least twice a week and observes what I see.
Now, from a cardboard standpoint, there is a facility to the north of here that does derive a substantial income, but they have the infrastructure of, um, a piece of machinery, whether it be a forklift or a baloder to, uh, when this stuff is baled and palletized, and then it's put into storage, so it's out of the weather. You know, if we're gonna do anything, we've got to think of the initial investment and take a look at the return on that investment.
Always.
So, you know, it means revamping a lot of things, but I mean, that has an initial cost. And then if we can't find volunteers, don't have enough volunteers, um, regardless of the color of the bag. And that, that's, that's a factor. Um, we gotta make sure that it's within our budget. Uh, you know, it's something that we want to make the investment to do.
I will have to thank you, uh, for bringing up that fact about people driving away without paying. Uh, if I'm not down there, and this is nothing against the rest of the employees, I had one person come up to me that's down there. Uh, Eric Davis wanted to know if he could help out by asking about the stickers. Uh, then he, an hour later, he came back and told me that the manager said he didn't want anybody asking about stickers, so didn't make any difference to me.
Which manager?
The one that just left. Uh, and, and, and there, I've seen people drive in and, and they do drive away without putting anything in the bucket. Uh, unless you point blank ask them. You have to ask them, and I do agree the last, I don't know what's due as the COVID thing that there, those people are not staying away. I know that Wendy Maidenhead that they want them wearing Tyvek suits down there to, uh, work in that area down there, which is a little bit far-fetched, I thought, but anyway. Uh, we don't even help people that can't even lift the bag up, put it in there anymore. Uh, it's just that we've been instructed to not to touch the bags. So, I mean, if that's what they're complaining about, that they're not getting the help, we have got rid of the grouch, uh, basically, because if he doesn't wear a mask, he doesn't, he's been told, don't stick around. Get out of here. No, we don't want you down here. And he has not been down there. He comes down and talks, but he does not work. We've got that situation solved up. But, uh, you're right, Gaetano. They do come in and they do, I've seen them time and time again, and I, I've been working over with Eric lately because they got, Frank has been in, there's a volunteer to work with the rubbish part, so. But I don't think any of them are asking if anybody's paid for their stuff. I don't know how you solve that other than getting the bags. The problem, the problem with the bags is if you read Gary's, uh, dissertation here is that it's a storage problem. When they checked into that a couple of years ago, it was 50,000 bags you had to buy, which is like 250 cases of bags, and you have to store them somewhere. You aren't gonna take them to a store and say, you gotta have 10 cases of bags in your store. Uh, that's gonna be a tricky situation to handle, but
I think.
Stuff has to be worked out, I guess.
I, I think the whole thing is.
It needed to be, it needed to have an overview. I, I agree with that. I'm not against that, but I mean, uh, I'd like to see some, some down-to-earth recommendations that, you know, what, what we would attempt to try to do there before we take any action. Um. The only action that we're taking is we did increase the price for C and D, and that revenue has come up. Uh, our revenue was $25,000 more on the garbage than it was when we, uh, finished, so we are making, that's our, that's our money makers are rubbish. And I can't believe people like Westminster and Athens who have roadside pickers pay for it in their taxes, and they bring their trash in and, and, and pay for us to, to take it. It, it just boggles my mind. And you tell them that and they just say, yeah, but it's easier to come here. I don't, I don't get it. It makes no sense to me.
I mean, it, it depends to, you know, a lot of it's the, and I'm not knocking anybody, but it's the caliber of the individual. I mean, I was down there for a substantial amount of time. This woman come in, um, three consecutive times, I watched her. She didn't pay for her garbage when she threw it out, and I reminded her of it. She saw, I'll swing back. I forgot my ticket. Never came back. Never came back. The final, the, finally, I gave it three strikes and the fourth time, I said, you know, you're not emptying your vehicle, and it was basically, what are you gonna do? I said, well, I'm gonna exercise some authority. And, uh, but I mean, you do have some people who are rotten apples, but I mean, the majority of the people that go there, they understand that we have an expense that it costs us. And they're willing to work with us. I mean, initially, when we started that, you know, you had, uh, a little, uh, few bumps in the road. There was some attitude, but, uh, people understand. It costs this community. And, you know, although we service, uh, I mean, we have people coming in there from Keene, from Charles Town, from Springfield.
I just wanna, I'm sorry, Stefan.
Yeah.
Um. There's a lot to discuss and, and it, this goes back to me. I asked the previous manager when this was, when I was saying the same thing. Nobody's checking tickets. People are throwing their trash away free. Traffic's a disaster over and over and over for two years. And the talk was about, I think her term was streamlining something. And then the talk of a committee. So I asked way back then, I wanted to be a part of it, and that's why I'm on this committee. And that's why I'm, the, still the biggest concerns to me are the three things I keep mentioning and, and, and that's all I have to say. I don't know. There's a report. We're, we're in a situation now, so we're not gonna fix that whole enterprise tonight, you know?
No. Well, I, 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 I'd like to move this forward, but I'd like to see the information as to, as Stefan mentioned, you know, what's, what's a baler cost? What's, what's this cost? What's the storage? Where are we gonna store this stuff? Those are all answers we need to have before we can make any decisions, and we don't have them here.
I, I understand, and I don't, I don't think our, I don't think my goal on that committee was to tell anyone what to do. It was, these are some things that could improve what's happening, and that's it. I, we could look into, and, and if we had a, a director and, and have this discussion with, with the person employed to run the place. And we could have a lot of questions answered and, and things shifted or moved forward.
The only thing I want to mention, Toss, you know, our goal is to make sure that, with the Rockingham residents, that we're doing the best we can for them. Um, the, the side note on that would be, uh, and I've read part of that contract. And I recall the part of the recyclables that their exclusivity goes to the hauler. So we may not be able to do anything with a baler or whatever for two years.
Yeah. I understand that, yeah.
My, my last comment is, um, this was an exciting process to be a part of. Um, I mentioned it before. I'll mention it again. This is something that planning and zoning could use. Where you have an independent group just come in, just, just see how things are going. I think other departments would benefit from it as well. Um, some of the ideas that were generated from this group, just, we had people with financial backgrounds, recycling backgrounds. We just had a diversity, customer service backgrounds. And what they brought to the table was a real learning lesson for me, and, and, and so I, I would like to see this happen with other departments.
All right, we have to, yes, yes.
Just that, I mean, yes, that's, that's a good point. However, clearly there was some communication issues that happened with the department head that if it was done with the departments, that would have to be ironed out to not have the same situation we have faced tonight. That the department head wasn't felt, he was consulted in a manner or wasn't explained to him. And just to thank Gary for his years of service.
I'll back that one.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll back that as well, but these are things that we've been discussing for as long as I've been on this board, and, and what I heard was, uh, yeah, we'll look into it. All right, moving on.
Can I get a comment?
Yes, sir.
So I totally, I just wanted to get this out there, get off my chest. I think, um, I'd be the first one to agree that there's certainly improvements that could be had down there. Um, for, for no doubt. I mean, that's, goes without asking. My thought would be to. My thought would be to find a way until, of course, it's gonna be a while for you to do anything anyway, but maybe this would be a good test for the new manager coming in at some point, get another set of eyes at different viewpoint. I, and I also think that the way that this was handled by our current interim manager, and it obviously just may totally go against anything, any reasonable person's way of looking at it. I think it was flawed to begin with, and I think there's still a lot of work, the committee could have done, come up with numbers, could have, I mean, and at the end of the day, I mean, I, one question I would like to know is, how many other recycle centers were visited out of the Walpole?
It was a 45-day process.
How many other transfer stations or recycle centers were visited, other than Walpole and Amherst Run Hall?
I couldn't tell you. I went to Walpole, I'm just one member.
Okay. So that's my point, there's a whole lot of work, and to take 20 years of progress down there, good, bad, or indifferent, and all of a sudden come up with a one single-page sheet that is written by the manager, who exactly didn't even come from the committee, is a joke. I really think the whole process was a joke. I agree that there's things that could be done, but the way that it was gone about, and the way they threw the current person that was running that under the bus, specifically by the manager, the interim manager, is disgusting. And I, I, I just think it should be ashamed of yourself for allowing something like that to go on the way that it did, and continues to. Disgusting. Should put a stop to it. That's all I have to say. Unless you have any questions to make?
I, I didn't catch the "under the bus" part.
I said that the person, there's no respect shown whatsoever to the current person who was running that, that transfer station. But yes, we talked to somebody in Walpole who heads that one up. So, and actually, the majority of the committee doesn't even use that facility. Three out of the four people, three out of the five people that were on that committee don't even use that facility, and probably never will. So I just think the whole thing could have been done better, and I just think there was other reasons behind the scenes that they got in play here that they should have, and I just think those over at Walpole would be ashamed of themselves. Could have been done a whole lot different. I think we should put on the back burner, and wait till we get a new manager, and then put it back on the burner and move forward from there.
Okay, thank you. I, I've been, this isn't something that just came up, I've been saying these same things for four years, and hearing from the person who resigned, that things were gonna change, okay? So when I form a budget, and I look at how much money the taxpayers at Rockingham lose, I gotta do something. I can't just hear promises. So what did I do? I, I joined a committee.
Yeah.
To do my part. And I wrote down some comments? Yeah.
Do you have another comment? Wade, go ahead, I think you just told you to go ahead.
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
Thanks.
Moving on, number seven, rec department.
Number six.
Oh, sorry. Item number six. Facilities manager, position. Says action item.
I'd like to have direction from the board. I'm just presenting this because I believe there's a need. What you guys do with it is, is your own prerogative. We routinely invest a fair amount of time and money addressing things after the fact. We already had discussions today about Windows 97 operates our HVAC system, so you call techs in here, and they spend all day, and we pay those prices. There's really no one who has looked at the facilities. I can tell you of multiple experiences going up to the roof of this very building and seeing holes in the roof, wondering why those holes exist, and why they haven't been repaired. We continue to have plumbing issues, highway departments, things that have gotten so bad that they rot walls out, furnaces that which, just for a lack of cleaning, have been allowed to expire prematurely, furnaces that just from the simple act of having filters not installed in a timely fashion, spray soot and dust throughout those buildings. Other items like carbon monoxide buildup in the sewer department, where it necessitated a quick response. This is, I don't know how to overstate the problem. We need somebody to take a holistic view of our facilities, and to begin a capital planning process, just not the person that does the work. We don't need a carpenter or something like that, but somebody who can work with these folks, know what the prices we're paying, if there's value to them. Coordinating, trying to get some kind of economy of scale, if we have plumbing needs, then let's get a plumber here for an entire day and knock out problems all at once. So this is an issue, I would be remiss if I didn't bring it to your attention. Now, having brought it to your attention, I'll let you guys decide how you'd wanna proceed. If you take it seriously, and you want me to move forward, then I'll generate a budget, show you how it can be used, the money that we have in the budget already, or we can just table it for another time.
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts were, having read this, and having some experience, there was initially, we were looking at, I believe, some type of cost savings when we were doing the budget, and then you came on board, there were some personnel changes, but the way I look at it, if we've got a plumbing problem, my, rather than creating another position, or having somebody in here, full-time maintenance facility, I think with the current economy, with the, what we're looking at for the, a good barometer of this is gonna be how the taxes look next week for revenue, but I would think that in their own areas, whether a department head or somebody designated oughta to, for example, we had this plumbing issue here about a couple of weeks ago. I'd get a plumber in here, a reputable company, that we know is not gonna put it to us, and say, "What's it cost to fix it? I'd rather spend money to fix it than to employ somebody to be here checking all these things, or keeping an eye on them, when we should probably, I don't think it'd be a big deal to have someone designated to keep an eye on stuff." You know, other people at their places of employment are being asked to do more with less, to, to get creative. I just see no sense in creating, building maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, but I mean, here we are, looking at another position, that we basically, I won't quite say we was eliminated, but I think we're gonna have to tighten the belt, do more with less, and I think that's the way we ought to be approaching things. I mean, this, if we could afford this, this is, sure, I mean, it'd be nice, but I think with COVID, the economy, recession that we're talking, we're not sure where we're gonna be. I think we should tighten the belts, and somebody be more responsible. If we know, for example, we get an electrical problem, let's, we have some designated funds, get, get the problem taken care of. Rather, I'd rather spend 75,000 on actual repairs or maintenance than having somebody in a position spending that money, and then spending that, those type of dollars on top of that.
Yes.
I'm not in favor of this facilities management position. Basically, as you just said, Chuck, that we would have this person to be running around looking at facilities, and if you look at the manager's responsibilities and statute, the manager's responsible for facilities. That being said, if we have a manager position in here, that means we're gonna have a person that are gonna be running around telling us what we need to fix, and then are we gonna be hiring people to do the fixing? So what are we gaining here? It doesn't make any sense.
So I have a facilities management background, the problems we're dealing with are much more expensive, because they've been allowed to persist for years and years. So that was a great example, that it's hard for you to cost account what it costs you when you ignore it for two years. Why? Because whoever was here just didn't realize this was gonna cost us, that this needed to be fixed, and we needed to have somebody aware of this. It was, it was weeping probably for the last year, when it finally gave out in, in sort of catastrophic fashion. That's just one example. We don't have anybody monitoring, for instance, energy consumption. We just, we had units that we found in the second, third floor, the cooler down here just operates, and whether or not it's cooling, that's a whole other issue. So it's burning fuel at quite a tremendous rate, and we have systems up there that, that weren't working. So this is expensive. I'm telling you that we cannot afford it, that the price of mismanaging facilities is too high. And I, a lot of us know that intuitively, 'cause we are the ones working on our houses. All I'm saying is, this is like your house repair, staying on top of it, staying proactive, and doing it ahead of schedule. The holes that we found in the roof last month, that, that was kinda disturbing. It's like, why, why, now maybe the manager by statute needs to spend time on the roof. My point would be, that's, that's not the objective of the next municipal manager, you cannot assume that they have a facilities background. We need somebody doing an inventory of all roofs, to make sure that they're tight.
Let me check with Susan and Ben.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it was my understanding that that roof repairs were on the agenda for the maintenance person we had on staff that was let go. So, and I, I another, you know, there was other things that were on that person's agenda. So I, I don't think it's accurate that everything was just ignored and not addressed. I think actions were taken a little prematurely, but I've said that in, in times past. I also don't really support this position. It might be something we have to bring somebody in to do a, a survey of, of all the things that are needed, but I, I think a full-time position is, is not necessary, and I think it's problematic when someone who was doing a lot of this particular stuff, including the HVAC, including looking at the roof, including scheduling repairs, was let go because it was thought that that position wasn't needed.
Ben?
Uh, yeah, I'm not in favor of it at this time. I don't think we need, like Sue just said, a full-time person to tell us what is wrong with our buildings. I think, as Stefan said, maybe the managers of each facility, someone needs to be designated, and they step up and see what's wrong, keep an eye on that kind of stuff. Not only that, but any employee really should be always on the lookout. I know at my place of employment, all of us are always looking out for stuff like that.
Yes, and for me, depending on the job description, I would support this position, depending on the job description. The manager, the management part, to me, I'm not interested in, and, you know, we're referencing the, what was on the last maintenance guy's agenda, but you walk in, spent 85% of his time in this building, not, not all our other buildings we own. A simple walk in the front door of the town hall and look up at the ceiling will, will explain where we got with that. So, again, it's the, it's the right job description, and, and the, and the scope of work, and, you know, that, when that roof leaked, I ended up in the attic and, and on the roof for some reason the next day, and, and the problem was, if you sit in the theater, which I pointed out to the last manager two years ago, about the big leak in the, down the wall, a person was employed, both those people were employed for two more years after that initial notice of the thing, which, you know what that meant? The roof leaked that, that suddenly everyone noticed, because we were sitting in the basement of a torrential downpour? That thing been leaking for years, been leaking up, up in the attic for years, and if you go up in the attic, someone who worked here before then, did a lot of work up there, and built beautiful catwalk system, you can walk around, you can see, you can see all the damage that was done over the years. So anyways, in reference to what was on the last person's agenda, those, those things were neglected, and a simple walk on the roof, it's a rubber membrane roof, it'd take you 10 minutes to patch a hole that's flashing up against one of the rooftop units. But anyways, we have a lot of buildings, take a look around at all of them, so whether, whosoever's job it is to pay attention to it, to, to write up RFPs to get these things fixed, that needs to happen. I'm a big fan of preventive maintenance. We replaced the heating system at the rec center a couple of years ago, right? And it was fairly new, and, and it wasn't maintained, it wasn't, so there's, there's a lot of facilities around here that need to be looked at, so however we wanna do it, however it wants to get done, it, it costs a lot less, you know, preventive maintenance than replacing the whole, the whole item when it catastrophically fails.
Well, I think.
As Peter's had his hand up, sorry.
I just made a couple of points. Number one, maintenance on our, our facilities has always been a problem. We've never attended to that, and then what happens is, there's a major issue that comes up, and we spend a lot of bucks. Being a homeowner for years, it's a simple system. I mean, if you got a furnace, you clean the damn thing once a year. You don't let it go until it blows up or has a problem, somebody's always looking at it. To me, it just amazes, I, I think Ben's got the right idea, whoever's, whoever's in that department, it should be, should be taken care of. We don't need to hire a guy at $75,000 a year, plus benefits and everything else, and to tell us that we got problems in our building, we know we got problems in them. To me, it's, it's, if we got a foreman out there, or supervisor, and he's working out of a building, and he knows there's something wrong with it, then he needs to bring it to somebody's attention. If that's not happening, then the manager needs to get on their butt and say, "How come you're telling me now, after I gotta spend $10,000 to fix something? Why don't you tell me six months before, when it only cost me $1,000?" This is, this is a fall down in the, in the communications and, and the management system we have here. Not the current one either, I'm not just blaming Chuck, everybody seemed to be putting a finger there, but I mean, this, it goes back several years. I mean, we, we go through this every time we turn around.
Mr. Chairman, any other comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, I missed part of Ben's, I heard some of it when I was coming back, so I'm not sure what he was exactly talking about, but what I'm looking at is, for example, we could designate, and it just doesn't have to be the department head or whatever, but you have a, a committee of employees, whether it be the department heads or employees, and you have a system. I'm sure everyone's pretty much got email now, if not, I know they have a cell phone, but what you could do is have, for example, if, you know, we notice the lights are acting up tonight, that employee or that individual, whether it's a, a department head, or lead person, or a super, or, or an employee, regular employee, has to take the initiative. We could have like a, a simple system. You fill out a slip, or you drop an email to somebody to say, "Hey, in such and such a building, in such and such a floor, in such and such a room, this item is of concern, somebody oughta look at it," and this is what it's doing. It, it doesn't have to be rocket science, it just has to be somebody taking the initial initiative to say, "Hey, there might be an issue here, something it may need repair, have somebody take a look at it." And then we, you know, pretty much common sense judgment call, if we need an electrician, we'll get an electrician, need a plumber, we'll get a plumber, we need a carpenter, we'll get a carpenter. But, you know, there's a lot of people who, and I'm not knocking people here, but some people just drive by with the blinders on, "Oh, the next person will get it, the next person will take care of it, they'll leave it." No, mention it to somebody. I'm not faulting anybody, but I, maybe we need to have a, communication seems to be lacking here, so we need to improve communication.
Well, we, I, I just talked about, I mean, just talked about issues and the same thing, and then Peter repeated what I said about, we didn't maintain the, the heater at the rec center, but we pay someone to run that center, and it never got serviced. So that was my first question, when it was a $7,000 bill, I said, "What?" They said, and then my next question was, "Did it ever get serviced?", and they said, "No." So, it, listen, I hear that, that everyone thinks it, it's, and it is, the department's head responsibility, okay? But if, then they come back to the manager, and the manager tells them something to do that they don't like, and they resign, and we're all gonna blame the, the current manager here again? So, you know, right now, I don't know, I'm not gonna say it three times, but there's a lot of things that need. a lot of things that need attention, knowledge, ability to maintain and take care of these items that are very expensive when they fail. So whoever does that, uh, let's figure that part out. Whether it be this position, whether it be the department heads and holding them accountable, we need, I don't know.
Well, that rec area thing, that, to me, that's unexcusable.
It is.
I'd have that person in the very next morning and I'd say, hey.
But that never happened.
Well, it should've.
And if they did, and if Chuck brought him in today and then they resigned, then everybody's mad at Chuck.
You know, I will, I'm not knocking the manager. I will commend Chuck, at least we're getting some attention to this. Yeah, I was here when you came onboard, we talked about that leak up there and she said she was gonna do something and it didn't do anything. I know you went up on the roof and they talked about a $200,000 plus roof repair.
Seven hundred.
The, the, well, whatever it was, that's the problem. People didn't follow through in positions of authority and somebody has to step up to the plate and say, damn it, we're gonna take a look at it. You know, it's not, I'll get to it next week or let the next guy worry about it.
Just one more thing, we, you know, we, we had someone in that position for, I'm not sure, was it two years? The, the maintenance position?
I don't recall.
That again, spent 85% of his time in this building. The water damage is still on the wall and the ceiling in, in that building. I, I guess that was on his agenda as well. Get the right person in there for this position, whatever that position may be, the, the, the job description, I, I think would be, you know, it costs money to save money sometimes, but in the long run would benefit everything. That's all I know.
I, I think, you know, if we had a central spot where like these complaints or these items noticed were emailed to a central location or something and Chuck in his capacity as a manager could say, yeah, uh, looking at the description and the idea or the, what's described as the problem, uh, this is more of a priority to, priority than this, so we'll go ahead and have somebody take a look at this as soon as we can. This one here can probably wait, but I mean, uh, someone's gonna take the initiative to mention it. A lot of stuff, if it, if it hadn't been mentioned, for example, if it was mentioned, some people in the position didn't act on it and it, it goes on for two years.
Correct. And, you know, we're kinda talking about the past here and I think this is an approach that was thought up, we're discussing it. Peter has another comment.
Well, just my point is that it just bogs my mind that, uh, when we do these things, we don't have maintenance contracts on this. Just bogs my mind. My, my furnace man services my furnace.
Right.
He calls me up and tells me, you need to get it cleaned, or I have it cleaned every year regardless, I don't care.
Just until recently, we used to get a different guy cleaning the boiler each year because we'd take the low fuel bid, remember?
Yep, I, I know, you and I talked about it.
So I don't have a different guy clean my chimney every year, I have the same guy who's familiar with it.
Yeah, so.
But anyways, Chuck's done a lot of work in trying to understand all the equipment, all the facilities, and, I mean, it clearly has led him to think about, uh, and like, I don't know.
Well, you know, I used to work for a construction company in my early days right out of high school and on the dashboard of that rig was, I can't remember exactly, maybe Peter can recall, but it said, this piece of equipment helps you earn your living. And it gave you a list of things, it must've been a dozen items of checks and dues and I think it had some don'ts in there. Um, you know, whether you live here in this community and you work here for the town or the village, or you, you're from outside of it and you work here for the town or the village, I mean, I, I worked in an ambulance service and while the rig's still rolling forward, somebody's slamming it in reverse. And I said one day, what the hell's the matter with you? That transmission goes, this is not only a vital piece of equipment, but somebody's gonna pay for that. People have to take the initiative to be responsible.
All right, I completely agree and with separate topic, um, doesn't seem anyone's interested in moving with this item right now. Who is that?
This is, sorry, this is Jennifer Gurley, I'm Jade Gurley, 678 up in the-
Hi, yes.
All right, yeah. Hi, I'm Jennifer Gurley, this is, we're the, which we affectionately call the yellow building, uh, Rocky Hammersters.
Yes.
So I, I, I hope the idea is not done on arrival. I, I'd love to see a job description and-
Me too.
I think what Chuck seems to be talking about more is, um, the need for a, a project manager. So, uh, the piecemeal attention that's paid to a number of these buildings around town, um, it, it doesn't address the magnitude of the problems in a lot of these buildings. And the problems I think with the town hall, like many of the other buildings, go way back. They, they go back many managers. So I just hope it's not done on arrival, that's all. I think it's got a lot of potential, I think it's really necessary, depending on what the description looks like.
I, I 100% agree and my first question was, I would, depending on the job description, I would fully support this, uh, this item because it's a very needed item. We clearly don't have someone in that position and, uh, as things continue to deteriorate and rot and not be serviced, uh, we'll wait for the failure and then replace it.
I can attest that it is very expensive to go.
Horrible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, um, sort of related to this though, um, just an update, I mean, this, about the painting of the meeting house, is that happening this summer or is that being pushed back?
My understanding, I don't have the answer, I just know that it's closed because of COVID. I don't know where the maintenance schedule was. Last year it was supposed to be painted with a lift, I have, maybe Chuck knows?
We've issued a solicitation, Walter is, uh, our CLG coordinator's doing a great job, uh, that's active right now, so we'll see.
Okay, thanks. And then the other question was, um, again, maintenance related, was the window project that was in two phases, one last summer, this, one this summer, has that been put on hold as well?
That's right, there hasn't been any movement on that project.
Do we have any sense of when that will happen or is it just a week, another, next summer, kind of thing?
The windows that were addressed, yeah, in the, in the bricks, um, some of the, the major issues that really were compelling us, um, they had, were addressed on the third floor. Um, we do gotta, we do have to get back to that, but that has not been a priority on my list.
So the windows were COVID as well or what, what happened with the window replacement?
So, yeah, we just never moved on that contract. It's, it just hasn't been a priority of mine.
Yeah, I believe it was in the one, a contract, two, two-year phase, so the same guy was gonna come back to do his second part.
Correct, and the third floor windows are smaller and I remember that clearly, we funded it, we funded the brick mortar on the south side and we funded painting one of the four sides of the meeting house. Correct?
Yeah, this summer we're supposed, I guess it was gonna be two sides, was the original plan. Okay, this is Carrie, is one of those things, thank you.
If the board has any direction on the town hall windows, um, I haven't heard back from that contractor, if that's a priority, I'll move on it, but that's among all the things on my list, I'm pushing for that.
I think it's a priority because I, they're expensive, um, historic windows that could fall into this maintenance problem. And he was scheduled to come back, I think it was just, it's one of the things that fell through a crack when we lost, uh, various people in the, in the chain here.
It's not, not a priority on my end at all in a building that's, uh, staffing four people right now in the middle of a pandemic. The windows that are in there, um, absolutely fine.
But we had, I understand, we have a contract with this person who's supposed to come back this summer, so some kind of follow-up should be done.
This, this summer's different than when we signed the contract.
I understand that, but if we just ignore him, I think he just needs to be reached out.
I understand, but you said it was a priority to have them replaced because they would like fall out or whatever, you said.
I, I, it could be, I mean-
I've reviewed the windows.
I think we need to follow up with him, that's all I'm saying.
I'll follow up. I agree with that. All right, any other maintenance questions, issues?
Bye, Tom.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um, ju- just briefly, that I believe it's important that you guys perhaps put it on your next agenda and because you need, you need, even if you hire someone at a time or you decide to do advise, buy the, um, maintenance project, whatever it is, you need someone to get a handle on all of the things in all of the town buildings that actually need to be done, you will, somebody needs to be a walkthrough, you need to make a list and a list, and then you can, I mean, by that, you can figure out how you're going to handle it, whether you outsource it or you in-house it and how you fund that. But I think it's important that you don't wait till you have to see every time you fix something because it's a lot more expensive as you're already aware, but try to find, come up, some plan, please.
I think, I think that, I 100% agree with you. I believe I'm the only one that agrees. That would be a facility management position, which the other board members are not interested in having. So I absolutely agree that that needs to happen. I don't believe it's gonna happen before our next meeting. That would be the position of, uh, depending on the job description, uh, one, one task for a facilities manager. Wade, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Moving on, we're all set here. Item number seven, rec department. I don't see Ryan. I don't know, I know they're having movies and he seems pretty excited about what's happening. Chuck, you have anything?
Yeah, the, um, so his work, I, I think, needs to really be acknowledged. He has, uh, really been taken off with COVID compliant, outdoor movies, um, other functions. Um, you, you can hardly recognize his operation at this point because of some of the changes that he's made. He's really filled an, an important gap. Um, Ryan has, um, well, I think he knows it personally as a father and, um, and with families, trying to get people out and experience some kind of recreation has been a priority for him. So this is just on the agenda, simply to mention, um, all the great work that he's been doing and, uh, if there's any questions, let me know.
You had mentioned that there might be some movies going into Saxon's River, is that at the rec center or?
Yeah, Ryan, um, so I mentioned that this has been an unexpected success and can we move to Saxon's River? So he is, um, he has joined up with Leah Clark, lifetime resident and, uh, working here at the town hall to try to get some kind of active outdoor movie presence in Saxon's River. So that is to be determined, but they started working on that last Friday and they should have a plan ready this week. The, the sky's the limit with-
And how many, yeah, sorry.
The sky's the limit with this, um, these movies. It really, we seem to have really hit, uh, an interest among our residents.
And how many people do we, well, we only have one or two at this point, so how, how many people are attending, do we know? I mean, how many cars, I guess you don't have any in the cars.
There's cars and there's family picnics, he's now turning people away. He's at capacity. So if he doesn't expand, he's, um, he's just gonna start turning more people away. Even his advertisement is, um, rather unique. He, um, he knows a lot of young people, so he texts those young people a poster and says, please text the five other people and off it goes.
Stefan's always had that dream of the Robertson outdoor bandstand, put them all down there, the Robbie Papermill.
Yeah, if we could stick a disable in there and figure up a screen or something.
I wasn't serious.
I know it's temporary, but it'd be held. You better, the tents are sitting down there in the corner.
I, I just wanna remind Ryan or perhaps even the board and Chuck that a couple meetings ago, we were talking about the Saxon's River rec area. I'm hoping that's not on their agenda where they're gonna try and show the movies because Ryan had moved all our facilities out of there, uh, because of the, uh, sanitary facilities that are broken out there and nobody's tended to fix them. The village of Saxon's River owns that facility and they should be the ones that would be doing the repair work and I have seen nothing in their minutes about that. So just wanna put a heads up that we ought to be careful where we're going with it.
Um, that was mentioned, um, porta potties might be, you know, something that's an option, but, um, I'll see their proposal because it just, there seems to be a great interest, so I didn't want to just say no right off the bat.
No, I'm just saying, this is, it's, he brought it up, that's why they moved everything out of there and brought it in, in our rec area up here because of the facilities, the sanitary facility.
And that hasn't changed.
Can't wash your hands, you can use the bathrooms, but they don't flush from what he was telling us, so we're, it's, with this, with this disease going on, it's a consideration that needs to be thought about.
Agreed.
Sorry, I'm reading the comments here. Some great, great discussion going on in the chatroom. All right. Thank you, Ryan, for your continued hard work during this difficult time. One thing that some kind, you know, as we sit here with masks, having a Zoom meeting is we, it's, it's easy to forget why we're deal, doing things the way we're doing right now, you know? We're, we're doing everything differently, adjusting our lives and, and budgets and schedules, um, as we're in this, the middle of this pandemic here, so. You know, we, we, if anybody watched the other meeting last night, is, you know, people get heated and have discussion, but I truly believe everyone has the, the same intentions of, uh, doing what's best for their community, you know? So, and we surely can't solve all the problems in this meeting tonight. Next, we have item number nine, uh, so this is union negotiations and an attorney, attorney rep representation. Peter, you wanna talk on that?
Yeah, um, after attending the first couple of meetings, number one, our strategy meeting, uh, that Chuck Jigs and I attended, uh, and our first meeting with the union reps, uh, and their attorney and et cetera, uh, I thought it was advisable on our part that we should have an attorney representing us, uh, um, I understand it just when some, uh, toss up on the, on the Bells Falls end of the village end about the police thing, uh, uh, going forward, I think we need to do that. At one point it was mentioned that we need to ask an employee what the meaning of a part of the union agreement was, which I thought was kind of foolish. If you're in a lawsuit, you don't go to the opposing lawyer and ask him how to answer your questions. So we, we need to have someone that's been experienced with this negotiation going forward. Uh, and I'm gonna ask for some guidance, uh, in the executive session, which is, uh, a thing down union negotiations, I don't think we want to put it on the table, but, uh, I have contacted Ray, uh, just asked him if he was interested in doing it. And only went to Ray because he's done the negotiations for several years, uh, and, uh, so I'm just trying to get a feel from the board, um, what their ideas are.
I support that. I support that, um, decision and if I remember when we first discussed, I, I don't even know what, it was about saving money by not having a lawyer.
Yeah.
I don't know. So anyways, I, I support it. That's it from me. Stefan?
Yeah, I, I agree with it, having on both sides, village and town, I think, um, without mentioning details here, it's time.
Susan?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, he's, he's dealt with these people in the past with the unions, so I agree.
Ben?
Yeah, I agree, I think good, I have someone, put some bag in there.
Okay, good. So we'll discuss that a little further here in a bit.
Yeah, going forward, I, just while we're still in an open session, I, I, I would like to either have a consensus, uh, or a motion that I could contact Ray Masuko because I don't wanna upset the apple cart by acting on my own on behalf of the board without their, their consent.
Susan, Stefan, wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that authorizing select board member Peter Golick-
Vice chair, yep.
-to communicate with, uh, Ray Masuko for reference, uh, representation, reference the, uh, union discussion, the negotiations.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to- Motion been made and seconded to a point.
Just a comment before you go ahead.
Uh, vice chair Peter Golick to discuss, did you list the name of the attorney?
Yes, it is, sir.
Ray Masuko, uh, in leading, uh, moving forward, you, union negotiations discussion.
This will not involve discussing terms with Ray for his pay. Uh, that would come back to the board. Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be negotiating that, uh, with them. We'd have to get that from him and, and have it okayed by the board.
Is there any idea about the length of his time? That would be impossible, right?
All we need is like three meetings and that's what they were predicting, the three meetings, of course. The next one, the 12th got lost and.
Okay.
So, I, you know.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, number 10, been added tonight, manager spending freeze discussion.
I'll, I'll lead this off after going through warrants here. Uh, I know we had like four weeks of warrants. Uh, there were a lot of managers miscellaneous expenditures that I saw with very unclear explanations there for, uh, and I just think that we need to either put a freeze on, on discretionary spending or set a, a, a limit on his spending. I don't know where the rest of the board sits, but that's just, uh, a point of information. I'll just bring it out.
Is there items in particular that you don't know what they were for?
Well, there's several of them, but I think some of them need to be discussed in, in executive session.
Without knowing what they are.
Well, there's a lot of them that, uh, I, if you wanna take it up now, I'll take it up and I'll, I'll lock it off the warrant, cause I got a list of stuff I'd like, I wanna talk about warrants before I sign any, any further warrants. It should actually be in the warrant discussion.
Well, I can't make any, take any action if I don't know what I'm voting on.
I'm not asking for any action.
Oh.
I'm asking what the board feels, whether they should put a, uh, should we institute something along that line? We are in the process of looking for a new manager. There's no provision, uh, that I can find in our, in the policy that says, um, that he's allowed to spend $15,000. There isn't mention of 15,000, but doesn't say who spends it, so. I, I know Stefan's been talking about this for several years and it's not, never got off the ground, uh, but it's just amazing, we're, we, uh, we spend money on one end and, and we're worried about taking it in on the other end. It just, uh, I, I think we need to, we need to do something about it at this point.
I, I don't know what, um, you know, is being referenced. I did have them separate out the expenses. I'm not aware of any discretionary, but I'll, um, I'll defer to you all, my concern with, um, when you saw those items separated, I felt that any spending on my behalf is gonna be criticized, so I wanted it to be separate so that everybody could see how everything was listed. So you even saw things like 25 bucks or something, cause I had to spend money. I have no real interest in discretionary spending. Some of this stuff, it, it hits my personal account and then I have to move it on. And that was just partly because taking over the manager's position, this is a very temporary gig for me. I don't even have a credit card, do not want a credit card. Uh, so there's a lot of things that a, a, a manager normally takes advantage of that I'm, I'm just not interested in. But definitely, um, I, I don't even know what's being discussed, but every item I should be able to account for. And if I don't have a good answer, then, um, my first reaction is I'll pay for it, cause it's not worth, um, any kind of criticism at that level. Um, but definitely transparency, so if you feel like there's any issue with transparency, I've gotta get better on that. So I gotta be able to show you each and every one. I think we did notations, the system is kind of odd, but I should be able to answer every single expense. Um, Peter, the, the only concern I would have is, um, so right now it's, it's nine o'clock and, um, as I have young kids, so I, you know, I get up around five. So you're concerned about spending and, and now it's the first time I'm hearing about it. So then we'll go into executive session, it'll be like nine thirty, ten, and I'm gonna have to recall things that I did not prepare for. I, I have no clue what to say to you.
Well, that, that's one of the reasons why I asked for warrants and, and the financial information to be hard copy. Right now, the only ones, because they have laptops, is Gaetano, Debbie, you and Shannon. The rest of us sit here and the questions asked, does anybody have any questions? Kinda hard to ask questions if you don't have the information in front of you.
I have the same packet you have.
Yeah? Great. You got warrants?
No.
No, I don't have them either. So how do you expect?
Well, you're referencing laptops.
That's right.
Correct. I'm ass, answering your statement.
Yeah. All right. So if you have a questions, the last meeting, when Chan was here, she had, went going through some of the warrants and he says, does anybody have any questions? We have nothing to look at. I don't, I'm not gonna bring in my, my home lap, my, my desktop computer and plug it in down here and, and look at it.
Okay. I don't have any concerns with, uh, manager spending either.
Well, I don't have a problem with the little $20 ones that he just mentioned, but when I see one there, they're sitting out there for $1,900, $2,000 here, uh, it, it kinda, you ask questions.
And you should get answers to each one of those. In the case of, when I had to buy tablets for COVID-19, um, we just were expedient and said, I'll, I'll put it on my charge card. I held the charge for a month or two. Obviously that comes at expense to me, but we, we didn't have the luxury with Wendy stepping down and me getting into the position to wait. And, um, and so we acted at a speed. But each item, I should be able to say, this is what it's for, this is who told me to pay for it. And if I can't answer that, then I have to eat that expense. But I'm pretty sure I'll be in that position to explain to you.
As I say, here's the, here's the stack of warrants that we just got tonight to sign. We get them electronically. My computer's sitting home, I don't have them in there. I don't know if he's got them on his computer somewhere that he's sitting here with a laptop.
So, so now we've separated, there's two issues. You're concerned about my spending and I, I should have answers for all that. The second one, which I hear from you and I'll, I'll improve, is you need greater access to the, um, excuse me, the warrant articles. And I, I think that that's a legitimate criticism and we'll respond to it. Um, you are catching us off guard, uh, this week because of the finance director being absent. So that puts me in a disadvantage.
So let me ask them, so I'm clear. What do we do? We bought, this is not your personal laptop? You don't bought laptops just recently?
So in the case of like tablets.
Correct. I got about four laptops.
We needed.
That's what's connected to Rockingham. This isn't mine. This is Rockingham's, run by them.
Okay.
Um, there's other examples where we can't have people come to town hall anymore, um, with the same frequency. You take photos of your, um, timesheets from department heads, you email those to your finance director. So each one got a bargain basement, iPad, they take the pictures, they scan things, they send it off.
So what's the price of a bargain basement?
Yeah, I think it was like $3.99 or something.
Um, I'll, I'll just say it, I know when I've mentioned this before with previous managers, it was, well, basically you got a policy that allows me to do it. And I said, well, you know, the courtesy of letting somebody know that you are going to do it, not that you have already done it when someone questions it. And I'm just, I'm not knocking you, I'm just saying my past experience with previous managers was you got a policy that allows me to do it. If you tell me I can only spend so much, I'll just go out and get three invoices that add up to whatever. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's why I've advocated it for years, as far as a spending limit.
We, we can definitely revise the procurement policy.
Right.
I'm gonna, I, I don't want this job. I don't want the authority or the power. So the idea that I'm gonna try to hold on to that, you could work with me right now to revise the procurement policy so that you get that kind of feedback and it's required for future managers. So there's, there's not gonna be an argument here.
I mean, I always have, again, advocated, and I like that. I advocated getting the amount down lower because that would say, hey, I wanna do this, but I don't have enough. It makes me aware of it, makes my fellow board members aware of it.
It did generate, you know, Brenda's eyebrow was raised, like for instance with my quote unquote, it wasn't discretionary in that, I didn't have a choice, but I, I said I wanted everything separate so everybody could see just every cost, no matter how small.
Right. Well, the, the first thing that jumps out at me with this here is we had, um, an assistant that an item was purchased for at one point, I think totaling 1,400 bucks if I recall correctly, that caused a little bit of a ruffle the feathers of some board people on both boards.
Understood.
Yeah.
But, but I love the idea.
This was in the, in the middle of the stay-at-home order, um, when you could sign things remotely like you just explained.
Right.
Everyone seems to have that capability. But I, I don't, we're, we're discussing, we're way beyond, uh, agenda item here. Guys.
Well, it's the first I, I've basically heard of it, so.
Heard of what?
Laptops or whatever, the tablet, whatever. I'm not into all this stuff, so it would've been nice to have said, hey, you know, by the way, if you had them since you came on board with the, uh, with this COVID situation, it was news, it's news to me.
I've, I've had a laptop since they first came out. I haven't bring my own. I'm not sure what the, is that, are you concerned with the spending on that, the manager's spending?
Well, I wanna hear more about it because I'm not, I'm not familiar with it, other than it's a $3.99 super deal, I guess. But I've advocated over the years, uh, with managers that we had this, uh, policy that if you need to go over whatever it was, I don't have in front of me to verbatim, but a certain dollar amount.
Right.
I've always wanted it lower than what it was, that way.
Definitely. I've heard that. I've also heard, uh, to go all digital, it's been discussed. I've been on this board for four years. We've had that discussion several times. Folks like you prefer a hard copy. You've said it over and over and over and over. Peter wants a hard copy? Here we are discussing a laptop.
My hope long-term is that when you become a citizen of, in, in the computer world of Rockingham, you can see in real time what I'm doing, what anybody's doing. You should be able to see the financials, you should be able to monitor things. You shouldn't have to ask me permission to, you know, get something. Long-term, we wanna see one network for everybody so that everyone's seeing the same things happening in real time. That's, that's long-term, but that, that's where we need to go.
Yeah.
And that respecting that other people aren't gonna be into that, but over time, we're gonna see increasingly people depending on digital platforms. Right now, to be able to tell Gaetano, I need this signed, he signs it, emails it back to me, that's, that's the goal. That's the gold standard.
I mean.
I think part of the problem here is, again, is a communication issue. I think it just a simple, and your daily updates, just a simple, this was required, this is why, that would've answered any of these questions people are having. It just looks funny when it comes across the warrants as laptops for Deb and Gaetano without any context of why.
And I can easily just tell you, you know, in the daily reports, this is the money I spend and, and just make sure that people know about, that's no problem.
No, not, I mean, not for every cent, obviously, but if there's something that's quite, you know, very specific to this particular COVID his, issue or something large like, um, laptops, because you also, there's things like, well, certain people are working on a whole laptop and that, why did they get them? It just solves that communication and the rumor spreading and it's all of that nonsense. It's a simple line.
Thank you. I'll, I'll definitely do that. Thank you.
So announce, he should announce that he bought Andy and all the highway people. You want that in your report as well? Every dime he spends?
I, I.
Cause if he doesn't put it in.
Not every dime. I'm saying when it's something very specific like this that looks, I, I think you have to use your judgment and when it's not clear, it's clear. I mean, it's an everyday work, everyday doing business, not kind of a thing. I don't expect it to see that in a memo, but when it's out of the ordinary like this, yes. All it needed was a line in the memo. That's it.
I'm all for that and, um, I thank you for that. I hope the articles, I don't actually see the, the feedback, but we trying to get more notation in every expense so that you actually can read and be informed in real time. If anything's hinky or you don't like anything, say, hey, I think this is a concern and that enables me to understand, oh, if, if Peter's thinking this way, I bet you others are and I'll make sure that everyone gets that update.
It could very well be there, but when we get the printout, we don't get the full memo line.
Okay.
So it could be an operation of how it's printed out.
You're on the example, Chuck. I just looked in here and there's one, one warrant in here that has 14 Charles Wiggs items on there and it says COVID materials, COVID materials. What, what are you buying? I mean, I, I'm assuming, I have to assume that's either information materials or maybe the plastic things upstairs in the offices. I have no clue what that money's being spent on. Uh, a couple 20, $30 ones, I don't, I don't even look at those things, but when I see one that's $900 or $800, I'm gonna, it'd be kinda nice to know what it is and I don't think I should have to come into the office and sit there and go through the payables for every vendor and, and question it.
Um, what you would do.
That's what, what gets my attention is when I see this.
Send me an email and you'll get a response.
These two laptops were charged off as COVID expenses. And my second question is, if Debbie Wright has one and he has one, why isn't the village paying for theirs? We, they both come on the town account. Are we being reimbursed from the village for Debbie's?
Okay, um.
I mean, I'm.
That should be a direct village cost and, um, that was my understanding. Thank you for the clarification. The other thing is, the minute you have a, you know, curiosity, any item, email me and I'll get your response back, usually same day, that says, this is what it's for. I'll give you a copy of the expense, the receipt, and, um, we'll take care of you.
A, a simple explanation is fine for me. I mean, you know, you, you told us to ask questions about, you know, and, and the finance manager actually should be answering the questions, not you.
Agreed.
So, you know, if she's not around, you know.
I, I, I just.
And I'm not blaming her. I mean, she, she's welcome to the vacation she's taken. I mean, I don't care, you know? I, I take my vacations too, but, and then you do too, so I'm not holding that against anybody, but.
Perfect.
You know, I just, when I come in there and I start looking at those things and there's huge, huge expenditures, it just causes my, you know, we're supposed to be watching the budget and knowing what we're spending the money on and if it doesn't appear that we've got money in the budget or a item is not budgeted, you just ask the question.
Maybe we can, when Shannon returns, we could put this item on the agenda and have full discussion because way back when this all started, we were keeping track of everything that was COVID related.
Precisely.
And this patient of getting reimbursed. So perhaps this whole discussion right now should be related when we get all the information, which in fact, all this stuff is probably going to be reimbursed. Way back when we had this discussion, we were keeping track of everything that was COVID related. We were separating it, cause we, somebody probably asked them to do that.
I think Wendy mentioned it, that's what we were going to do.
And I think Stefan, you remember, we had this discussion, I think even when Monty Barnett was a manager before Shane Quan, and we even had it when Shane was here, about electronic.
Yeah.
Everybody getting a laptop on the board and the board decided at that point, we don't need the laptops, we're getting hard copies.
Well, I like a hard copy one, cause my computer sometimes acts up, but I pull stuff up on the phone and I think Gary was here earlier, mentioned he'd sent an email out this afternoon, to be honest with you. I might've missed it in here, I haven't looked, I don't recall it, but sometimes in finance or somebody sends me something with an attachment, the attachment might open within an hour or.
Yeah. Anything else, anything else on this item?
No, I think we're ready to move on. I just, I just wanna bring it out to just express my frustration here, I guess, if you wanna call it that.
And in terms of my expenses, just for the public record, um, I am trying to curtail any unnecessary purchases, period. So if I cannot prove that that was absolutely essential, whatever item, whatever money, then, um, that's a bigger question and that's a fault of mine. But for right now, I have been pursuing a full, um, effort on cost containment at all levels.
Okay, um, review agenda items for next select board meeting.
Yeah, remember we, we go back to two meetings a month in September.
It'll be the first Tuesday in September.
Yeah.
We have Gaskill Road right in the beginning, that's gonna be pretty exciting. Um, we've done all the public process. done all the public process needed for the reclassification. We have some survey data, which is also very useful, but we will start with a site visit out there.
What else? Right now, we'll get a, have a nice financial update, for sure.
In regards to that financial update, are we, I mean, I'm hoping by then we'll have a sense of what came in in the August payments, and how much trouble we may or may not be in, because at some point, we've got to do a look at our budget again, discussion, and I don't know when that's on the plan.
I'll add that. Thank you.
If I may, I just happened to see, I think it's Rebecca asking about, and I've gone to the website too, and I'll, sometimes, because I haven't gotten my packet at the time, and it just pulls up the agenda, and I think she's asking, from what I can see here, are the full packets not posted anymore at the website? It went to the agenda, and it's just the main agenda, not the packet. Also, the agenda says it was updated on eight three. What was updated? And the, shouldn't this have been a special meeting? I don't know.
No. We already discussed all that. Is there, you have a, what's that have to do with what we're talking about?
Well, I'm just saying.
The agenda's on there. The agenda's on the website.
Agenda is, but people are used to looking at the whole packet.
I'll put packets up next time, and I can, it's no problem.
It's a little more work, but I mean, people are used to looking at that. I've been asked me the same thing, says, how come we only see the agenda, we don't see anything else?
You're talking to the website manager. I can do it.
You know, call the manager.
I get the same comment.
Thank you.
You want a union update on that, if we ever have a meeting again? I'm trying to get it on. The twelfth and the twenty-sixth of August is supposed to be that.
If possible, yep.
We should be able to give you something, because I'll have more information.
There's something else I'm forgetting, but I'll try to come up with it as time goes.
The only outstanding concern I have is the manager search, getting you all together to have a discussion as to what you want for your manager. I think that's absolutely critical. I do have some conflict come up with some of the board members unable to make the eighteenth combined board meeting. I would like to, and I know that's not the future select board agenda, but a combined board, but I think you really have to spend a lot of time on this.
Yeah, because we never really, I thank you for that comment, Chuck, because I think you hit the nail on the head. If we can't agree on a short list of priorities or criteria for what we're looking for, we're never going to get anybody that's going to mount the hill of beans. We'll be back here in two years doing the same thing again. And we never decided on that. We decided on the list of process, but we did not decide on, on that. And you mentioned conflicts with scheduling. I know the application due date is the seventeenth of August. I am out of town that whole week, and I would like to be here personally for that, any of those meetings with manager search. My idea is, just so somebody can think about it going forward, would be to have someone who has never, or hasn't been involved in a manager search committee, to be a lead questioner. In other words, lay out the first que.
Do we want to?
Let me finish.
We're, this is for our next select board meeting.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to explain my point.
About the next select board?
About my point. Chuck brought it up, I'm just expanding and explaining my position and my point. The point is, I'm saying is that it should have someone that hasn't been in that committee search position, to be a lead questioner, and everybody follows up with their individual questions beyond that. That's all I'm saying for, that's some of the stuff that we need to discuss. I don't care if you want to do it or not, but I'm just, I can throw that out there for discussion point at the next meeting. And I would appreciate it if I was able to attend that meeting, where we do the first start, the selection process, or whatever you want to call it. I've been told it's tough luck if I'm not there, and I don't think that's a proper response.
Okay. Anything else for the next select board meeting agenda?
Yeah, I have an item. We ought to at least start, at the very least, start thinking about it, and that is what we're going to do with this position of executive assistant. And my thoughts would be, if we went to the future, it'd be executive assistant slash HR person.
You're right, Stefan. You're right.
Not just because that's what it was before, but we don't have an HR person now. We have a responsibility to have one, not only to address issues, but we have employees who are, that's, that's an element of their, as an employee here, and, you know, I don't know how it works now.
Okay. So you want to put that on?
Yeah, I'd like to have that on.
Yeah, just see where we are with it. I know Chuck said he's having difficulty filling any position, and if the whole current situation we're dealing with, and COVID included.
Anything else?
Scaring people off.
Hopefully, I'm sure we're going to talk about this before we offer a contract of a manager to anybody, but I mean, I hear these comments, well, you know, they don't hang around here long.
We're just looking for agenda items.
Right. We don't want to get too far into the manager search discussion, because it should be executive session.
Okay. I'll save it for executive session.
Obviously, we'll have Charlie Hunter back with a proposal for you all to review.
Okay. So would you feel we just, as well-covered agenda for our next?
Yeah, and we think anything else.
Combined board meeting, manager search. We know what we need to do there.
We come up with that. Oh, did you ever, the roof out in Saxton, or that roof side, you never gave us, have you seen the specs on that, or the new, the new contract that we, or the new proposal from Jones?
I don't know as I saw it, but it did come back.
Yeah.
Chuck saw it, I'm pretty sure it's been approved, and it came in less than we thought, or I don't know.
Yeah, it was something like four grand.
You were talking about.
The whole thing, posts and everything.
The clarity of the, you know, what they're going to do with the posts in the ground and stuff, that's why.
It had been a while before we had a meeting, and it was, we had approved the funding.
Yeah.
So I didn't see the updated thing, but it's pretty straightforward.
I don't know. You were going to send me a copy, you haven't seen one.
He did, yeah.
I'll send one.
I just like to look at it, just to see. And have we notified Bucky that we're going to proceed on that?
Uh, you told me to, and I did.
And he's happy.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because he was thinking around next, last week, because he's working on that building that he owns out there.
Chuck said he was happy, very happy.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to make sure, keep him in the loop, let him know.
Okay. We need to review and approve orders, bills, and warrants.
Hey, motion to approve orders, bills, and warrants.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion been made and seconded to approve orders, bills, and warrants.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, here we go. I got a list of stuff here. Seven eight twenty warrant report, page three, Saxton River sidewalk. I believe we budgeted thirty grand for that, and we spent forty-eight G. Can anybody tell me where the extra funds came from?
I doubt it. The person that can answer that question isn't here, but I wouldn't say if we budgeted thirty that we spent forty-eight, so there's something else in there.
Look at the warrant. It's forty-eight, forty-nine, forty-seven, nine, forty thousand.
Trying to answer a question.
But we budgeted thirty. That was in the budget, and the discussion centered around whether we were able to use twenty thousand from the year before, the carryover in the highway fund, just specifically designated the Saxton River sidewalk, we never used it, and we were told it was dumped into excess into the fund balance. And you can't mix highway funds that way, but that's why I'm trying to find out what happened. And I already mentioned the Julie Merservey thing, so we'll go over that again. We just had the discussion on the laptops. We spent eighty-four hundred and thirty-six dollars for a hearing impaired system for the theater. I know that we were under ADA edict to get that accomplished, but we're not showing movies, so I just wonder why we spent eighty-four hundred dollars at this point, when we're not even using the theater. And we spent two thousand dollars for our, so you said that for Ryan to show his movies at the, at Direct Center. So I just wondered.
So question one is regarding the hearing impairment. It was presented to me as this had to happen. So it was, we understand at some level that the theater will open up in the future, hopefully in a compliant fashion, but that was required, but I don't have the background on that.
No, I just realized, I just wanted, you know, we're not using that, why would we spend eighty-four hundred dollars? We could buy, eighty-four hundred dollars would have paid for the Lees and Park lot, and then we would have.
Just answered you.
Come up somewhere else. He said he couldn't answer that question completely, so I'll leave it there. Okay, now on the seven twenty-two twenty. We have a severance package that was dished out to a dismissed employee. Can someone explain how that happened? Because there's no provision in the union contract, other than the fact that the town clerk assistant gets two weeks' severance pay if the new, if a new town clerk is appointed or elected, and replaces the existing assistant town clerk. In the personnel rules, there's no provision, other than they get paid unused vacation time and comp time. So I wonder, who made the decision? Why was it made?
Okay, let me interject there before we go to. Is this something that should be discussed in an executive session?
It can be if you want, but it's on the warrant, so I'm just asking at this point, because we're in the warrants discussion. I just basically figuring, want to know who made the decision. There's no provision for it, and what's happened now, by doing this action, we've opened the door for anybody else that wants to come in with a handout. You've set a precedent. The only one you don't have to worry about is Everett, because he eliminated the position. I'm not hearing anything.
I would answer that question in executive session only.
All right, because I don't feel, feel I should be signing this warrant unless I get an explanation.
Understood.
We've been through the laptop thing again. I think I got one more, I think I got over here. All right, seven twenty-nine. Page two, we spent twelve seventy-five for Masuko and Sterns for a dining, outdoor dining plan. Is that just for their consultation on the, on the ordinance thing, or the change to the, I know we were, we're talking about the emergency zoning thing.
Gary Fox and Josh Stern.
I'm just asking, because I don't know what else. It's, it's just a COVID plan. I just, you know.
We, we had to navigate the potential liability of operating in the public sphere.
I understand that. I'm just asking what it's, you know.
Yeah, that's what.
All right, page three, there was, we paid, this is kind of, didn't make any sense to me, but there was a thirty-seven hundred and fifty-four dollar payment to Unis, a Universe, which is, I believe, a uniform company, and the explanation reads, canceled payment, Rec Center supplies and equipment.
This is part of a.
It doesn't make any sense when it says canceled payment, we paid thirty-seven hundred bucks. I mean, I don't know the explanation, I'm just trying, without looking at the invoice, I couldn't.
So I'm not familiar with the, the details of that specific item. I do know that Everett started this. We were getting fleeced by this company who would just raise its rates to keep carpets cleaned, and we could do it at a fraction of the cost, so the directive was to stop the pain, yeah.
An explanation why it says canceled payment, and Rec Center supplies and equipment.
It's just trying to get out from underneath that.
The other thing is the Saxton River lease, I, we need to look at that again, the board does as a whole, because if we're not using that facility, why are we paying them a thousand dollars for the use of it?
We can have that as a future.
I looked at the lease, and it, it's there, but I, if we're not using the facility, why should we be paying them a thousand dollars, especially if they're sanitary facilities, not up to code, where people could get most anything going in there. Ryan brought that up, so.
I'll.
And we haven't been there for three years, so I know we've spent six thousand bucks, possibly.
I'll discuss with the, that board, and try to get a sense of their plans.
We should come back to the board and, and, you know, discuss the lease arrangement. In that same period, page five, there were two payments to the V-Trans, where Depot Street Bridge, one was six thousand, sixty-two and sixty-five. What were they for? What the hell are we paying them for? I know it comes out of the, some of the planning funds that we're supposed to be paying them, or our portion of the.
One of the things we've discussed is.
But I don't know what that was.
Yeah, we, we really have to get a handle on those non-participating costs, and make sure we've budgeted for it. To the best of my knowledge, we have not. But as they're working, and we talked about the borings taking place, every time those guys start spending money, it's raised some red flags for me. I'm happy that they're getting out there as quickly as they are, that was not fully expected, you know, because we've had these delays and these frustrations, but that happiness is colored with, you know, like, oh, we're going to start seeing bills.
Oh, yeah. No, I understand. I just, I just saw them, like, and you, there was your email, so that they were down there fishing in the canal, looking at the underside of the bridge. I just wondered.
And we have to pay the piper when there's some kind of agreement, and I have no clue.
My recollection from the onsite visit was it could be upwards to almost two hundred dollars.
That, that sounds about right.
That's one of the reasons I favored going to the other site, the, the new site, because if they found any contamination in these borings, or whatever they're doing, the tab was on the town at the old bridge, and I thought it was a good deal with a brand spanking new bridge by the Chinese restaurant there, and still, they would do X amount of work on the Canal Street Bridge, and it wouldn't cost us anything. But that's not the choice that was made. So you could see bills, from my recollection upwards to, depending on what they find, it could go, because they don't cover any of that cost.
Yes.
They don't, but the site has been, if you read.
Any other questions with the, I got a motion.
Not with the warrants, no, no. I'm not going to argue at this point. That's something for a future meeting.
Did you have any more questions?
Nope, I've done with those.
Anyone else have any questions? Motion's been made and seconded to approve orders, bills, and warrants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Other business. Susan?
I'm all set for now, I believe.
Thank you. Ben?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Stefan?
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to recognize a longtime, I guess, alternate historical figure here with our highway department, and that was the Mikey Fergat. I understand he retired, I just heard the other day, so I think maybe like a certificate of appreciation or something, for years of service, with the town of Rockingham would be appropriate, and I want to float that idea.
We have seen Mikey on the roads out there, looking all too happy in his retirement, but I think a certificate of appreciation or some other nice gesture would be welcome. Okay.
I have nothing. Peter?
I have one, but I think it's going to be better discussed in the executive session.
Okay.
Actually, I have one more thing. I know that the, the triple ups on Friday night are on, on hold. I just want to thank the volunteers who have put their time into that, because that was a pretty successful program. I know there were some high school students and others who put a lot of time into that, so hopefully they'll come back online at some point in the future.
Thank you. So we have executive session, update, contracts, and employees. We have a real estate matter. Does someone want to?
Yeah, the real estate matter requires only one motion. The personnel and union negotiations matter would require two.
Okay.
The first one, if you want to do the real estate one first.
We have to invite the town attorney.
That would be number one on the front page.
Have to invite the town attorney and the manager.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we enter into an executive session, and invite into that executive session the municipal manager, the town attorney, and the purpose of the executive session will be to discuss the purchase.
Real estate.
Or require real estate, where premature general knowledge may clearly place the municipality at a substantial disadvantage, and if any monies are to be spent, they would be spent in a public session.
Is the attorney present? You invited him, I don't see an attorney here.
I know, Peter. I know, Peter, I'm going to call him.
No, I wasn't explained.
Let's see here, make sure where I'm at.
I know, I know where you're going, I just wasn't explained on.
For purpose of discussing or securing real estate purchases or lease agreements per, per one VSA statute, three thirteen, section A two, I believe I've covered that, if I have.
Motion been made and seconded, enter executive session and discuss real estate matters, uh, inviting the town attorney and the manager, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.